We'll call the meeting of the Minutet City Council to order for today, Monday, January 3, 2022. Welcome everybody back from their long holiday vacation. I hope everybody did have a good holiday. Just ask that everyone, once again, go ahead and put your electronic devices on silent and/or on vibrate, and we'll keep the distractions down to a minimum. Roll call, please.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Here.
Pitner?
Here.
Podgula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Sitma?
Here. Number two is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number three on our agenda is the Mayor's Report. These, again, are for the December meeting activities. And thankfully, it was much shorter than the previous report, so it shouldn't take too long here. But I do have a couple of highlights to go through. On December 7, I was down at the Water Topics Committee in Bismarck with joint testimony on the Moss River Enhanced Flood Protection Project with Service River Joint Board Chairman David Ashley, and that was for both highlighting the work over the last biennium that has taken place, and then also going through the work that was ahead for 2022 and 2023. And for a little change of pace, David Ash-- Chairman Ashley had gone through and highlighted all of the work within side city limits, and I took care of all of the work that was outside of city limits to further establish the joint effort that is going on, both within the city Minutet and our rural partners. On the 9th, I was down in Bismarck, but was able to join remotely for the Minutet Fire Department Promotion Ceremony, and would also, once again, like to publicly thank Minutet Fire Department and all of the city volunteers that had volunteered through all of the testing activities that took place in early 2021 for the COVID testing that took place at the fire station, and those challenge coins were drawn up and then handed out in appreciation for that hard work. And just absolutely can't say thank you enough for all of the folks that chipped in on that. On the 13th, we did have Task Force 21 Board Meeting, and then on the 14th, we had Tracks Development Meeting between a bunch of the different community partners. On the 14th, also, the North Dakota State Fair had a Christmas event that I attended. And then on the 16th, FEMA Flood Plane Appeal Discussion. This is an ongoing discussion of the flood plane change that is coming from FEMA. Again, we've had staff working on this appeal process and have successfully managed to delay that implementation change out until what we anticipate right now, 2024. But we're working hard to hopefully see if we can even push that date out or even change from what they're anticipating that could look like. On the 16th, then, I did attend the Fifth Bombwing Holiday Social Up at Minutet Air Force Base at the Jimmy Doolittle Center. On the 17th, I did have a Flood Control Project Home Acquisition closing. Ward County Weed Board that I talked about at our last regular meeting. On the 21st, I did emcee the Marketplace for Kids, both the opening and closing ceremonies up at Minutet State University. If you haven't had a chance to check out the Marketplace for Kids event that takes place in December up at Minutet State University Dome, I would suggest getting that on your calendar. It's interesting to see what some of the kids come up with ideas with innovation for either new products or changes to existing products. So something worth checking out, and a great job, again, by all of the organizers for that. To highlight, then, on the 22nd, we did have the Secretary of the Air Force, Frank Kendall. We had talked a little bit about that at a previous meeting, visiting Minutet Air Force Base, taking a look at both wing missions, his first trip to Minutet Air Force Base, the importance of both missions, both with the Fifth Bombwing with reengineering of the bombers, and then also GBSD with ground-based deterrent that is coming in, and the importance of keeping Minutet on task and online as we are the third base mission to participate in that massive changeover. Great event, and I did have to include a picture of my grill up at Colonel Walters' house when I grilled steak, deer, and moose for all of the folks up there, including Senator Hoven, Kramer, and Representative Armstrong, and other members of Task Force, Colonel Menoway and Colonel Walters and their spouses. But more importantly, it was a great opportunity, once again, to meet the Commander of the United States Air Force and reinforce the importance of our missions, and of course, the support that they get from the community. The following day, Minutet Air Force Base Press Conference was held here by Senator Hoven and Senator Kramer, along with Fifth Bombwing, not Fifth Bombwing, but Task Force 21 members. I did have about 10 other meetings regarding regular city business with a shortened holiday month, and then other phone calls, emails, and social media staff interactions with regular city business to entertain any questions on my report. If not, I do have one appointment for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move your appointment.
Motion by Alderman Janser to approve my recommendation for appointment to visit Minutet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Olson. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Podgula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yep.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Motion is approved. Number five, is there City Manager's Report? Mr. City Manager.
I don't have a whole lot to report this evening. Things have been pretty quiet here over the last couple of weeks, including my taking some personal time off as well between the holidays. We're concluding year-end closeout and getting a lot of that stuff ready with paperwork and stuff internally, so that's mainly what we're focusing on. Unless the Council had any questions with regards to anything in the City Manager memo, although I didn't provide a whole lot in there either this time, but would be happy to answer any questions if the Council has any. But I don't have anything further to report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Any questions for our City Manager? Thank you, Harold. Number six is our City Attorney's Report.
Mr. Mayor and members of Council, I submitted a written report once again, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our City Attorney from Council?
Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Section seven is public hearing. This is a public hearing for the Renaissance Zone Final Approval Project M96. This is Tita LLC. Gabriel Holt, representing Tita LLC, recently constructed a commercial automated car wash located at 619 North Broadway. The Minutet City Council voted for conditional approval of this Renaissance Zone project on December 7, 2020. The Renaissance Zone Review Board recommends the City Council grant final approval Renaissance Zone Case M96 filed by Tita LLC for a five-year property tax exemption, including the improvements and land for the state income tax exemption. This is, again, a public hearing for anyone to come forward and speak either in favor, in opposition, or neutral to the recommendation before us. One more time, a call for a public hearing for any comments on the recommendations before Seeing none, what are the wishes of Council?
I move we close the public hearing and approve the final approval of the Renaissance Zone.
Second.
Motion by Alderwoman Evans, second by Alderman Pitner. Any discussion on the motion from Council? Alderwoman Evans?
I just want to, I know Mr. Holt is here. I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank him for being patient with some of us who may not have been excited about this project at the beginning, to really educate and show us what a wonderful job you're doing. And thank you for the investment in our community, and I look forward to all the other great stuff you have under-going in the city. So thank you so much.
Any other comments or discussion? Motion is to close the public hearing and approve the item. Please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yep.
Podgula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes. Motion is approved. That takes us to Section Eight of our agenda. There are 10 items on consent. I do want to note that we will be pulling out of 8.3, the ordinances, number four, as this item has already passed two readings by Council. So all items for consideration, with the exceptions of 8.3, number four. Do any of these items need to be pulled for individual consideration? Seeing none, what are the wishes of Council?
Mr. Mayor, I move we approve.
Motion by Alderman Ross to approve on consent. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderwoman Olson. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pitner?
Yes.
Podgula?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to Section Nine. This is the section under action items. 9.1 is the MI6 Ann Street Bridge Options. The MI6 consists of the flood control design from Broadway to Roosevelt Park on the south side of the bridge. Various alignment options were looked at through this area, and options consist of reconstruction of the Ann Street Bridge ramps on the south side of the tracks to removal of the Ann Street Bridge in its entirety. The SRJB took action after reviewing the various options at the December 9, 2021 meeting, as the least expensive option in regards to flood control, which consists of recommending removal of the Ann Street Bridge and providing historical documentation as a mitigation effort in lieu of repairing the bridge. The recommendation for action, there are three different recommendations for consideration. The first is for the recommendation of the Council to approve one of the options below in order to proceed with the design for MI6 and for the recommendation to the SRJB. Number two is 3B1, remove the Ann Street Bridge in its entirety and allow the SR JB to complete historical mitigation for removal. Or three, which is 3B2/3, request the SR JB reconstruction at the south portion of the bridge with the ADA access, and the city will commit requiring funding, approximately $1.6 million plus proportionally to complete the required repairs to open the remainder of the bridge north of the tracks to and for pedestrian use. Prior to taking a motion, I am going to ask our Public Works Director to come forward just for one clarification on the pricing for 3B2/3. On the $1.6 million, if you could just elaborate a little bit on the total cost of the project for the reconstruction repair of the Ann Street Bridge, because the previous analysis we had done was north of $3 million in totality.
Mr. Mayor, members of the Council, in the one recommendation they had in there, the approximately $1.6 million would be the cost that the Service River Joint Board would have in just reconstructing the south 150 feet of the bridge and the approach ramp. In addition to that, the city would still need to put forth, I'm estimating $1 million or more to renovate or to, I guess, restore the rest of the bridge. There's about 650 feet of the bridge that would still need repairs done to it. The total estimate for the bridge was $1.4 to $1.8 million, averaged about $1.6 million. So there would still be a substantial contribution by the city to repair the rest of the bridge. That's what the recommendations are in here. So just so you're aware that this $1.6 million that's in this recommendation isn't the repairs for the entire bridge. This is just to reconstruct the portion that would need to be rebuilt for the flood control project to go through. So you'd probably be looking at, like I said, I'm estimating over $1 million or more. You know, that was in 2019. The estimate was done. So I would guess it would be $1 million or more to bring the rest of the bridge up to standards, up to design requirements and ADA requirements and everything.
Thank you, Mr. Jonison. Going back to the total cost of the bridge, it was my assumption it was closer to three for that total back in 2018, 2019, when that study was done. Am I off on my numbers?
Mr. Mayor, I believe so. I looked at the report today. I think they had a low of $1.4 million, a high of $1.8 million. Again, you know, take into consideration that since COVID and supplies and everything like that, that estimate could be off, could be low. But again, they are just estimates.
Okay.
But it's, you know, somewhere between $1.6, $1.8 million from what I could garner from the report.
Thank you, Mr. Jonison. Any other questions for our Public Works Director while he's at the podium? Alderwoman Olson?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a clarification or a reminder to all of us, when was the last time that people were able to access the Ann Street Bridge?
Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Olson, it's been over two years. You know, we closed it initially for the MI1 Flood Control Project when construction was going on there. And then, when it was closed in 2019, they did the assessment to see what would it would take to bring it up to standards again, because we had issues with all of the planking and rails and everything on it. So it's been since 2018.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for our Public Works Director, Alderman Ross?
Can it, we can go through with that stage in the flood control. We're not, and still provide access, correct? Or I guess what I'm trying to say is, by taking the second or third option, we don't have to rebuild the entire bridge at the time when they build the access on the south side, do we, in your opinion?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Ross, no, we don't have to. I think what the Service River Joint Board, it was looking at, and as you know, I represent the city on there, they were looking at, you know, if they're going to commit to rebuilding more or less the south 150 feet, they wanted a commitment from the city that they were going to repair the rest of it. Otherwise, you're throwing $1.6 million, you know, away if there's no intent to rebuild the bridge and open it up.
Alderman Janser?
Thank you. Dan, and could you just remind us, so the funding for this $1.6 million that the Service River Joint Board would commit to this, what are the source, what's the source of that funding?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Janser, it's 65% State Water Commission dollars and 35% city sales tax, flood sales tax dollars that are going towards that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for our Public Works Director?
Just one final one, Dan. In terms of the process of fixing the bridge, do we have to go through the permitting process with BNSF for their approval?
Mr. Mayor, I believe we would have to. You know, our lease agreement or our easement agreement that we have with them, as Mr. Benson said at the last meeting, you know, it talks about if the bridge is ever reconstructed or fails to be used, which it has been for the last almost three years, that actually that lease reverts back to them. So we would have to negotiate a lease with them, some sort of lease to at least say that, you know, we still have the right to have the bridge there.
Thank you. Final questions for Public Works Director at this time? Thank you, Dan. Appreciate it. Then I would look to the Council for a recommendation, motion. Alderwoman Evans?
So I'm just speaking for myself, but we have been given a lot of information, I think some of it pretty recently. The Downtown Business Professional Association provided us with a great presentation that I think went through some potential funding sources. Like, I just feel like I haven't been able to sort of absorb all of this and sort of figure out the right path forward for myself. And so to that end, you know, I would like to make a motion to, we request that the SR JB retain the Ann Street Bridge access over the railroad tracks and come back to us with sort of in January 18 or soon thereafter with options for the design selection, particularly on the properties on the First Avenue Northeast and North Main Street. I just, I feel like there's so much information that we're being asked to process, and I don't want to make a decision that is irreversible. So that is where my head is at right now, is just asking for access, that we don't lose access and that access remain open, and we sort of take the next steps, figure out, you know, funding options, property acquisition, all that kind of stuff, or, you know, ultimately a decision to remove the bridge. But I just don't feel like I can make a decision this evening with all the new information that I've gotten in the past, I would say, four or five days.
Just for clarification, Alderwoman Evans, to retain access, we would have to approve putting it back into the CIP and repairing the bridge.
Well, then I'll add that to my, well, I mean, we could add it to the CIP. We don't have to fund that right at this time, correct?
I would, Alderwoman Evans, I would probably likely defer to our SR JB representative. However, they would need a timeframe for the full repair of, proportionally, they would repair the 1.6 with our 35% cost share. We would be then responsible for the remainder of the bridge repair after that to retain access under the current lease agreement. Mr. Jonison, how did I do?
Mr. Mayor, I think you nailed it. Speaking, I guess, with my Service River Joint Board hat on now, instead of a city of Minutet employee hat, I don't know that it's the Service River Joint Board's responsibility to maintain the access across there. That's a city responsibility. You know, the Service River Joint Board is only impacting the south 150 feet of the bridge. They have worked with BNSF on, you know, if they remove it or if they repair it, that I think is kind of a mute point. I think that'll be taken care of. I believe that it's a city's responsibility to, if we want to, I guess, look at designing the repairs for the rest of the bridge, maintaining the access and the easement with BNSF for the rest of the bridge along there, not a Service River Joint Board responsibility. Just my opinion. I would certainly, you know, bring it up to the board. We have a meeting this Thursday. I can certainly ask, but I'm pretty sure I know what the answer's going to be.
Look to the motion maker, Alderwoman Evans. With that understanding, essentially, is if you're asking them to retain the access, it would be for them to design and construct the $1.6 million and then put the city in position to fund the rest of the repairs for the bridge.
So I'm wondering if there's sort of an intermediate step, right, that they come to us with the design options?
Alderwoman Evans?
I don't know, or the design selection. I'm just trying to...
Alderwoman Evans, the design selection is to maintain ADA access in conjunction with the flood wall, and at that point, it would be just another iteration of flood wall design. And respectfully, I think it's a matter of fund it or don't fund it at that point, or before it even gets to that point, as the price, price tag isn't going to change. The building impact really isn't going to be significant.
Mr. Mayor, if I can add to that, yeah, if you look at 3B2, I think that cost was about $1.4 million. 3B3 was about $1.6 million. You know, with that, there would have to be some property acquired, a couple of properties down there. One, for the additional ramps that we need for the bridge, and two, for the First Avenue in order to fit First Avenue and the flood protection and everything in there. We've looked at numerous options of design in this area, you know, flood walls, closures, different things like that. So there has been a lot looked at. I'd be happy to bring some of these back for Alderwoman Evans, if she cared to see any of them. You know, the Joint Board looked at this option of removing the Ann Street Bridge is the, I guess, most financially feasible in their mind. That's why their recommendation came for that. If, if the bridge isn't kept, you know, you may be able to come up with some options to help save the businesses, or if First Avenue isn't put through and maintained through there. We don't have the right of way for it now. It's basically on BNSF and everyone else's property. You know, then you can maybe save the businesses. But in order to have First Avenue go through, be rerouted, and the bridge option to go in, there needs to be acquisition of some of the business right on the south side of First Avenue.
Alderwoman Evans?
And that was sort of where, like, I sort of got really inundated today, as Mr. Wilson sent an email to us with sort of this whole property acquisition stuff. And that's, you know, serious, you know, when we start acquiring property. So that was the thing that really what that would look like or not look like, and they were really good questions and things. So, again, when it comes to property acquisition, just having more information too about what that would look like, you know, how we would do that, you know, would be, I'd be able to make, I think, a more coherent decision.
I would look for some clarification on the motion. Likely the clarification would be either to move ahead or to delay.
So my motion is to move ahead, to not lose access and add the Ann Street Bridge to the CIP.
We do have a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Alderman Patagula. Before we get into too much discussion, I do know that the downtown folks are here and had submitted some information. Why don't we hear from some of them? Alderman Pittner, do you have something prior?
I just had a real quick question for Public Works Director. Sorry to have you sit down, Dan.
He's getting his exercise tonight.
I tried to put my hand up. My question is, you walk up, Dan, what does the process look for going to the railroad and asking for a permit? Is that a formal submittal? Is that, we got to give somebody a phone call and say, hey, this is what we're thinking about, what do you think? What is that, what's that process?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Pittner, I think I can start some of the discussions. We have some monthly calls with the railroad, so I'd be happy to, you know, mention to them that, you know, our intention is, you know, if your intention is to maintain the bridge and rebuild it, get their thoughts on it, on what we would need and what process, if they would require a new permit, you know, what that looks like.
Continue.
My only reason for asking is that, are we having all this discussion for not? You know, maybe we decide to move forward with it and invest the money, and then the railroad says, sorry, you know, it's done. And that's just it. Maybe if we could get some clarification even on that before we really go down the rabbit hole and we kind of put a pause on it, if we put a pause on it, that's one question I would like answered possibly as well.
Alderman Ross.
So in your history of this whole thing, Dan, have we had any discussions with the railroad about this?
Mr. Mayor Alderman Ross, I don't recall that we've asked them specifically about it. Frankly, we didn't really want to bring up that it was in the lease until we had to.
For clarification, Alderman Ross, I did have a conversation with a BNSF official about a potential cost share at some level for either the rehabilitation or the removal. They were interested in neither, at their cost. Other questions for Public Works Director at this time?
We'll wait for him to sit down.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Ask a representative from the Downtown Business Association at this time.
Mayor Sitma, thank you. I'm going to call on our technical friend in the back, Mr. Hackett. He has a presentation for me here. I'm going to just check and see if I can run this with the arrows. I can, okay. We're going to want to, as we talk about this over the next few minutes, maybe walk back some assumptions that have become a part of this conversation over the last few years that we think mostly as a result of the new information we gathered last week on December 20th, that may allow us to sort of reframe the conversation about the Ann Street Bridge. And so we've put this together for the benefit of not just you, the council members, but the community at large as well. I will go through this as quickly as possible. Again, I'm Josh Waltski. I'm the interim director of the Downtown Business and Professional Association, and we have shared with you in the past that we believe the bridge is a vital connection point for the community and a service to our business members, a service to our residents, a service to students, as you can see here in a picture from prior to 2019 when we had some central campus students commuting home on the bridge. So with that, I'll get going. Rolling back to the past, that old idea that if you don't learn from history, you are destined to repeat it. This is a very apropos quote from the Ward County Independent, May 20, 1909. Some time ago, the Great Northern had practically its own way in Minot and closed up Main Street, which can never be opened again. We see only too late the folly of this matter. A very prescient statement from 1909, as we now contemplate losing access over the railroad again, only this time not at grade access, but our aerial access in the existing bridge. So with that, in this slide, and the one that I thought I had shared with you, there would be a video in the right-hand corner. I am not going to play that video because it's about, this one's about seven minutes long, and the next one is about 18 minutes long. But we will share these publicly. This is the idea that desire paths, these are pathways that pedestrians and people want to travel on. And when they are identified, it's very important for those of us who identify them to then honor them. And you'll see these on college campuses very regularly, as students cut across grass pathways or grass fields and form a dirt trail. What I think we have here and why this has become a very longstanding conversation in the community is that this bridge represents a long identified desire path for citizens in this community. So that was the idea of this slide. Oh, look at that, there it is. Learning as we go here. On the theory of walkability, this is a speech, a talk by Jeff Speck, who was formerly a keynote at the North Dakota Main Street Summit. And he talked about the theory of walkability and why it matters and what you have to deliver in a walk to actually get people to walk. And when he delivers this, he does mean people like mine on North Dakota where we are very auto-centric. We can be converted to become pedestrians and bicyclists, but only if we create a series of and consistent set of circumstances. So this is a very interesting walk. If you didn't get a chance to watch it, I encourage you to review back, to look back and check it out. These are very germane to this conversation. But as we move on, what we're asking you tonight is to walk back some of your assumptions, specifically about the bridge, but also about all these issues as they tie together in this part of downtown. We've got flood protection coming together with a First Avenue North project that has been long desired by the citizens, and we also have the Ann Street Bridge, this longstanding connection point between North Minot and downtown. So as we look at flood protection as it relates to this, this is a 100-year opportunity. Of course, as the SRJB has done for us, we need to evaluate the primary and upfront capital costs. These are a really big factor, maybe even the biggest factor in all of this. But there are other factors, and especially related to revenue, we want you to consider things like what revenue is lost, specifically if we take certain properties and we remove forever from the tax rolls the opportunity to generate revenue from those properties. We also want you to consider what might be gained if we are strategic about how we go through this process. So as we look at particularly the north end of Main Street where the bridge deposits into Main Street, there are a couple of properties that have been contemplated for acquisition as a part of the larger project. We're asking you to please consider the development potential for those properties, the existing revenue that exists there. Obviously, the acquisition costs contribute to a project, and in, you know, in the case of a needed acquisition, elevate the cost of a project. We believe there's a pathway down there that perhaps allows this project to be done in the interest of downtown, that saves the bridge, that allows the property acquisitions to not exist, and we just want to make sure that that is all fully vetted before a final decision's made. But also importantly, a couple of these properties belong to what we in the downtown world, in the downtown development world, term as patient, early investors. These are the folks who take risks on behalf of our community in property redevelopment projects without any guarantee of return. And the properties that are potentially on the block for acquisition are both owned by some of these important, early investors. And we want to be very cognizant of the impacts we have and the attitudes that the city's decisions convey out into the private sector. And so it's an intangible piece, but we do think it's an important one for you to consider. And this next slide probably captures what is the most significant opportunity and exciting part of what's being contemplated with flood protection. But outlined in green is approximately 13 acres currently owned and controlled by BNSF that the SRJB, according to what we learned on the 20th, is in negotiations to acquire. We know that this is going to be on the wet side of flood protection. We also know that it's going to have some use in the future. Who knows what it will be? It will be very limited because, again, it is inside of flood protection and in the flood way, but it can be recreational. It can be field space. It probably could be a soccer field. We don't know what it's going to be, but we know, and we are very hopeful that we will at least have it or have access to it. So as we move on, moving towards First Avenue North, outlined here in green are several of the properties and the land directly adjacent to the Third Street Bridge. Why we're bringing this to your attention tonight is because after flood protection is complete, as you can see, the levees are to the north of this land, this real estate will be available for some use, but only if the dollars used to acquire this land are local dollars. If you cost share these acquisitions with the state, or if you cost share these acquisitions with the federal government, this land is going to become encumbered. We have seen this in many projects that have taken place across the community, but once it is cost shared out to those federal partners or those state partners, we no longer have control of it. If these properties are acquired with local dollars, we have an extraordinary redevelopment opportunity that could be revenue-bearing, this could be neighborhood building, this could be community building. We think this, this concept, these items need to be a part of this conversation as you evaluate some very long-term decisions for flood protection downtown and Minot as a whole. So with regards to the Ann Street Bridge and the topic of the night, this is kind of the crux of the new information that I think we need to be considering. And inside of this, these are some of the assumptions that we're able to let go. What we recently learned on December 20th is that the historic structure itself does not matter. The state Historic Preservation Office has suggested that what they value, and we learned this from Mr. Benson as a part of the conversation on December 20th, what they value is the access. So this opens up an opportunity that has not previously been considered or evaluated, that with permission from the railroad, and we will get to that shortly, maybe a new bridge is more feasible and cost-effective than a rehabilitation of the existing structure. Certainly, new build, new bridges can be built with historic character, they can be built with ADA accessibility, they can be built with maintenance concerns and all the elements that you would initially consider if you got to start from scratch on this. So we do think that the shipos' opinion that the bridge can be removed is germane, and it may open the opportunity to, starting from scratch and starting from a better and smarter perspective. What we'll also share with you is that the SRJB's intent to acquire the land on the north side of the railroad tracks will dramatically open new opportunities with regards to accessibility and concerns on the north end of the track. Obviously, we know the grade that departs all the way to the north side of the river is not ADA, does not meet ADA standards, but with the acquisition of the land on the north side of the tracks, we could certainly entertain construction of a ramp or a ADA accessible feature on the land that we are very likely to acquire. So we think this is new information and important information to evaluate. We've also learned that the SRJB is willing to be a two-thirds cost-share partner on the work on the south side of the ramp. You know, if the estimate of $1.8 million to rehabilitate the entire structure, you know, holds, you know, we have a much lower cost project when we have a two-thirds partner on that, on that south portion of the bridge. We also have some new decisions in the community over the last month with the voter-approved addition to a high school, addition of a second high school on North Hill, the transition of central campus to a middle school. Of course, we don't know exactly what the future's going to hold, how the schools are going to reorganize themselves in terms of neighborhoods, but this northeast Minot neighborhood seems like a very likely candidate to be programmed with middle school kids from that neighborhood. In that case, this bridge access is going to be a important and safe route to school for those students, as well as McKinley School on the north side of the bridge, which is the general place for downtown residents and kids who live in downtown to go to school. So the hope to become a walkable city, this bridge is a vital component of that plan. Now, with regards to BNSF, there have been a lot of assumptions made, but as we just heard from Mr. Jonison, no direct engagement on the issue. And what I want to, what I want to talk about for a moment is what I think we should assume about BNSF. One, I don't believe it's reasonable to assume that they are going to pay for a bridge that is not their responsibility. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your efforts and in terms of giving us the call to try on this, but I got to be honest, we are just, we are not surprised that they have chosen not to pay for this bridge because that is not their business. What they are in the business of is hauling freight and doing it as safely and as profitably as possible. And given that assumption that they want to continue to haul freight, they want to do it safely, they want to do it with the least amount of interruptions as possible, we think there's a few things they might be interested in gaining with the contemplation of a new easement or a new bridge. One, clearance heights. The old bridge, the existing bridge, is not as high as the railroad would like it. We learned that as a part of the Third Street exercise we took a couple of years ago when we tried to entertain a reconstruction of the Third Street viaduct. We also know that, and you can see in this picture, there are piers on the railroad right-of-way. It's very likely that the railroad would like to see that right-of-way further cleared of obstructions created by the bridge. Is it possible that a new bridge could create that? We believe so. We also know that the railroad has an interest in protecting safety, and if we remove the bridge, then we know we are going to see an increase in at-grade crossings. Again, that's the reason the bridge exists in the first place, was to reduce these at-grade crossings. So, and as we go back to the desire paths, you'll see that very clearly if you circle back to that video at the front. So, and most importantly, as we get back to this question of all this land on the north side and the access, if this is acquired and it becomes a recreational space, or a park space, or a gathering space, or some use by the public and the community, how do we get to it if we close the Ann Street Bridge? And when I say that, how do we get to it from downtown conveniently if we close the Ann Street Bridge? There is no access to the west. The only access to the east is off of the corner of Third Street up here to the far east side where the green ends. For the vast majority of downtown, that is not a convenient or reasonably reasonable access point because it's going to require walking, in some cases, three or four or five blocks over, and then two or three or four or five blocks back to get to the primary access point. Walkers will not do this. In the theory of general walkability, we learned that these, these are the ingredients that inspire people to choose alternatives other than walking. So the other thing I want to invite is a conversation about what this bridge can become if we choose to invest in it. The history and the Minot stories that exist underneath it are remarkable. This first picture on the left, the end of the line, it is doubtful if, in the history of the West, anyone ever saw a vaster yard of material in one place than was brought together in Minot in 1887. This is the year we were the end of the line. It's a remarkable Minot story. In this second picture, the early trade, it's very hard to make out, but in the very background there, what looks like a pile of rocks is actually a pile of buffalo bones. This was from the existing takeoff, very close to where the Ann Street Bridge takes off today, all the way over to Third Street. It was estimated to represent 7,000 buffalo. Later on, we have the center of industry, and for the next 60 to 70 years, the valuable role the railroad played in Minot and the region. And we also have, you know, I think what we have here is modern Minot in terms of a connection point and an attraction. And I show all of these to you only to invite, like I said, the opportunity to imagine what this bridge can become. It can become an educator for our community, it can become an It can become an educator for our community, it can become an attraction. So if we think about it in those terms, there's a lot to be gained other than a simple connection point. Obviously, the big question, how do we pay for it? First steps, we got to decide to save it, we got to add it back to the CIP. And once you provide that clarity, then we instruct and invite our staff, perhaps with the assistance of the SRJB, to begin exploring all the available options. Nothing goes off the table. We start with these three steps and then decide based on what we learn from there. But that's where it begins. So let's talk about some of the funding that is available. Where there's a will, there's a way. I'm going to first bring up the Transportation Alternatives Program. It is tailor-made for this particular project. I'll show you about, we'll talk about this in the next slide. We also have the recently passed infrastructure bill. This was passed on November 15th, there is a lot of money, we have a brief slide on this. We have sales tax revenue, which is regularly used for infrastructure projects. We have flood protection, we've already learned that they're going to be a partner. We have property tax reserves, which get used when they exist for all sorts of different projects. We also have the opportunity to consider a district-wide tax increment financing program or district. This could let or create an opportunity for the new development in downtown, the new dollars achieved when developers come in and add value to structures. This new revenue generated from those projects could conceivably help pay for projects like the Ann Street Bridge. We have to be open to having a discussion on how we pay for it before we can walk down some of those paths. So, first of all, the Transportation Alternatives Program. You all have been using this very regularly for the last 10 years. In fact, December 6th was the most recent project approved with a nearly $450,000 investment in new sidewalks around Edison School. I show you the slide here on the right because this is from the state of North Dakota DOT. This is a funding source that creates an 80% cost share, 80% to our state and federal partners, 20% locally for bicycle and pedestrian projects. The Ann Street Bridge checks that box. For safe routes to school, the Ann Street Bridge checks that box. For scenic and environmental projects, the Ann Street Bridge checks that box. For potentially historic projects, once again, the Ann Street Bridge checks that box. So this is a very relevant and germane funding project, funding source that we have been using regularly for the last 10 years. We have been working off a priority list from 2010. We would encourage you as a part of the larger exploration to update that priority list. We think the Ann Street Bridge should absolutely be one of those priorities. And if it had been a priority for the last 10 years, perhaps we would have seen some funding and some previous action taken that didn't require this conversation today. So that's one beautiful alternative that's in front of us. We also have the bipartisan infrastructure law. This was the bill passed on November 15th, signed by President Biden. This is not a under-contemplation bill, this is signed into law. It has new funding for things like the Transportation Alternative Program we just talked about. But there are a number of other funding buckets here that if we find the will, we may find a way to help support the cost of keeping the bridge in service. So I'm getting towards the end here, I do appreciate your time and patience with me. The three outcomes that we are asking for tonight, one, keep the Ann Street Bridge, add it back to the CIP, empower the SRJB, or whatever agent you want to, to negotiate a amicable and probably most importantly, mutually beneficial path forward. And we do believe there is an opportunity to create that, we simply have to engage the conversation and find out. If we learn otherwise, we can adjust when we get there, but it starts with having the conversation. Outcome number two, don't take the property on the north end of Main Street. Please, let's explore every alternative we can, let's look at the cost of walls, and if we have to evaluate other options with regards to levees, we do need to be cost-conscious, I'm not suggesting we don't, but we also need to be conscious of the other impacts that these decisions have. And as we talked about with the First Street Northeast area, where appropriate, please acquire the BNSF land with local dollars so we can keep future uses and potentially revenue-bearing uses available. So at the end of all of this, why we believe these are your three best paths tonight, this is the fastest path towards the clarity the SRJB needs to keep this project moving. We say clarity in both a political and design sense. The city and citizens of Minot have been fighting about this bridge for 110 years. Maybe we will continue to, maybe we won't, I don't know, but if we support the bridge, we know we're going to make a lot of people happy. This is the path, supporting these options is the path that will generate excitement and optimism and confidence in the direction of the city of Minot. This is the path that honors our past and plans for our future. This is the path that aligns with the city of Minot values, the city of Minot aspirations in terms of partnerships and all the other elements you guys discussed as a part of the council retreat that took place last summer. We really believe many of the elements of this project are in perfect alignment with the Magic City aspirations. So we'll revisit this one more time. We see only too late the folly of the matter. We are hoping that that is not the case tonight. Very quickly about the DBPA, we are over 100 members, some of them in downtown, some of them not. They all support our mission, which is to develop downtown as a center of commerce, culture, and civics in this community. I will share that you, share with you that we have nothing to gain organizationally from supporting this position tonight. It's actually, in fact, the opposite. Our investment and this time to tell this story to you has cost us money. It has required we focus our attention in other places which may have been served by our time, energy, and resources. So, and I do think that's important to remember in all of this. You have an organization standing before you tonight advocating for their mission, and it is, this is why we exist, to do these things, and so we think it's very important that you understand that. With that, I am very grateful for your time, I would be happy to stand for any questions. I know there are other people here who would like to share some comments as well though, so I will happily sit down and find some water frankly as well.
Thank you, Mr. Wolsky. Just a quick question on your proposal here on the property for the acquisitions on North Main. Is that with the assumption already that walls are already in the plans for the flood control project?
Well, Mayor Sitmo, my understanding and what I have evaluated and saw on December 20th was that largely walls are not contemplated or have not been shown to the council as an option, a design option for consideration with regards to flood protection. They may well have been existed and vetted, but we haven't seen them publicly. So at this point, we're simply operating off of the information that we've been shown.
I ask that only because on the city's GIS and the flood control, it's showing flood walls through the downtown, not levees.
Well, again, Mayor Sitmo, according to what we observed on December 20th, the preliminary designs that you're being asked to contemplate largely do not show walls in that area, they all largely show levees. It's obviously a much bigger footprint, larger impacts to property takings, things like that when we deal with a 112-foot footprint versus maybe a 40- to 60-foot footprint for a wall.
One last question then, on your proposal, I just wasn't clear, are you talking on the north side of the tracks then, dropping the ADA rents into the green area inside the flood control wet side?
That is, I think, one of the things we get to explore, excuse me, Mayor Sitmo, when we contemplate a future that keeps the bridge in place or contemplates a new bridge, yes, I think we would absolutely want to create access into that green space, whatever it may become. You know, I think there's all sorts of alternatives that we get to contemplate when we fully evaluate the situation, the goals that we want to accomplish, the costs, whatever they may be. When we take all of this at a whole, I think we have an opportunity to really create something special here for the community.
Any other questions for Mr. Wolsky at this time?
Thank you all again.
So we have had some extensive discussion on this already. I would open up the mic just for a couple of minutes to anybody else who wishes to come forward and say a couple of words. I would ask that you do keep down to a couple of minutes though. Please come forward and state your name and your city of residence.
My name is Logan Vettel. I live in Minot. Do I need to send my address to?
No, you do not, sir.
I do not, okay.
Thank you, continue.
Okay. So I'm going to do this in three parts. The history of the Ann Street Bridge, my personal, like, why I want it to stay myself, and then what it means to the community. So Ann Street, Ann Street Bridge's history starts with a temporary and highly dangerous footbridge spanning the Great Northern Railroad tracks in the Mouse River. In 1908, the city decided to make a new bridge, however, in April, Great Northern tore it down because Minot was building on Great Northern property without checking first with the company. Finally, in September, Great Northern agreed to a foot viaduct. Great Northern and Minot would split the costs, Minot would have to pay $1,0895, but Eric Ramstead helped fund the project. Finally, the city made enough money in April of 1909 and constructed and did that, June of that year. Many problems arose, people with wheelchairs and strollers had trouble with stairs, and people got blasted with smoke from the trains that went by. Eventually, in January of 1918, the Great Northern Company modified the bridge, set their ramps on either side, and they also made it smoke-resistant, and it stayed smoke-resistant for around 32 years. During the flood of 2011, the bridge took damage and was shut down after the flood. When I was a little kid, I always wanted to view the trains as they went by the bridge, and it was a perfect spot to see them. And I wanted my, I want my younger brother to enjoy that too, but for a majority of his life, the bridge had been closed. I often used this route to visit my grandparents when I was younger. Now that I go to school downtown and have moved from South Hill to North Hill, it provides a safe and direct path to school, and when they eventually turn central campus into a middle school, my younger sister will need to use that bridge, and so will my younger brother eventually. The Ann Street Bridge is very important to those who live nearby because it provides a safe and quiet route to downtown Minot. It is also wheelchair-accessible. Some may argue that you could go across Broadway or Third Street Bridge, but for starters, they are both very busy streets and could be dangerous for young children. Second, they are very loud and hard and, very loud and can be hard on some people's ears. And third, the car exhaust. Majority of the noxious fumes are directed directly at the sidewalks. The Ann Street Bridge is older than any of us, making it a bridge connecting us to the past is a great, is a great use for many of the residents by allowing us to cross the... Hang on, I'm getting dizzy.
Take your time.
Do you need a chair?
Yeah.
Can somebody bring him a chair? Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
You're doing well. Just pull the mic down, just pull the mic down by your, by your sir. Thank you.
It is a great use to many residents by allowing us to cross the Mouse River and the railroad tracks safely. I believe it should be a valued piece of infrastructure, not left to rot, discarding all the history, but instead kept up to the standards for all of us to enjoy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to come forward and say a few words?
That was great, right? Thank you. Hi, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Sean Antany, and I live here in Minot. I will be super brief and speak in generalizations, which I hate, but I will leave you my long list if should you like to have some specifics. As an individual, I use the city of Minot walking and biking infrastructure all the time. If it is warm enough, I do not drive. So this is important to me individually, and I, you know, thanks for letting me be here and expressing that individual desire and that it is useful to me. But I want you all to know that it's also useful to all of you and to everybody in the city of Minot. There have been lots and lots of studies about the benefits to a city when we create and maintain pedestrian and biking infrastructure. I'm going to cite very briefly one by the international design, engineering, and architecture firm ARUP. And they list, I have a list of 50 benefits here, I will not read them to you, but they discuss the personal and health benefits of maintaining pedestrian and bike infrastructure, environmental benefits, public safety benefits, community identity benefits, and economic benefits, of which there are many. So I am here this evening to encourage you to maintain, whether that means repairing or rebuilding the Ann Street Bridge, maintaining the bike and walking infrastructure and all the benefits that it provides to our community. I thank you for the opportunity, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ryan Ackerman. I work as the administrator for the Suris River Joint Board, that's the entity responsible for implementing flood protection. First of all, I can sympathize with Alderwoman Evans regarding the depth of information that we're asking the council to consider with regard to this issue. Ethically, I'm required to disclose something. My father purchased and renovated the Suline Depot, and it would appear that the parking lot for the depot would be negatively affected by the project regardless of the alternative chosen. What that means for me personally is that Christmases get just a little more awkward than normal moving forward here. I appreciate the presentation and the ideas of the DBPA, Mr. Vettel, Dr. Tangney, and others. However, I got a responsibility here to provide some information in your deliberations from the perspective of the project. From a personal sense, I love the Ann Street Bridge, and I want to see connectivity remain into downtown. I think fundamentally, the question is whose responsibility is that? So just a couple of statements here. First of all, we can't, from the SRJB perspective, say with certainty that a new bridge will be permitted by BNSF. So we can't tell you that that will be, that will happen if we elect to go down this road. Secondly, we can't say with certainty that state flood protection funding could be used to construct a new bridge if that was the alternative chosen by the council. Certainly, we'd have that dialogue with the state and try to advocate on the city's behalf with regard to that, but again, we can't guarantee that outcome. Thirdly, we can't say with certainty that First Avenue will be developed fully with the Mouse River Enhanced Flood Protection Project. The railroads have indicated no willingness to sell right-of-way or land west of Main Street and south of the BNSF mainline. They want to retain that area between the two railroads for future connectivity and expansion, which makes the connections west of Main Street for First Avenue maybe harder to achieve, especially if we look at long-term. Understanding that the arguments being made regarding a new bridge being an alternative to fix what the flood protection project is breaking, however, I want to introduce an argument from a different perspective, one that states that the bridge is unfortunately already broken. It's been closed to public use by the city of Minot, and plans for rehabilitation were essentially deferred past the planning horizon for the city's CIP capital improvements program. Also, we've got other mitigation options that have been identified, including historical documentation for the bridge prior to demolition, and also rehabilitation of the parts of the bridge that would be affected by the flood control project. Of course, the latter, as has been discussed previously, would require a commitment from the city of Minot to fix the balance of the bridge to restore pedestrian access to it. And in addition to that, I think it would be appropriate to plan for another access onto the top of the bridge from the land that is being considered for acquisition from BNSF, is essentially the BNSF land that is going to be acquired, hopefully with the flood protection project, would be isolated from downtown unless you go all the way over the Ann Street Bridge and then come back on the Victoria Bridge. Negotiating with BNSF regarding a new bridge and figuring out exactly where to place that bridge based on, you know, a future park layout and future downtown development plans... plans, it's likely outside the scope of flood protection. I, I want to say that that would be exciting work to do. It would be. I think it'd be meaningful for the city, be meaningful, meaningful for downtown. However, it feels a little bit out of the scope of, of flood protection. From the flood protection perspective, these types of considerations and negotiations, I think are best left to the city of Minot and the Minot Park District in coordination with the Downtown Association, and also in coordination with the SRJB if this infrastructure would come into contact or would need to be coordinated with any flood protection designs. I understand the desire to use state funding to cover a majority of the costs associated with this, but we also have to acknowledge something, and it's that any increase in project costs comes at the expense of the rest of the project and the rest of the residents within the basin. Make no mistake, funding is on the critical path for the implementation of the project. We've been consistently harping about that fact since the project began. The more we spend, the longer it takes to complete, and the longer that the residents at the end of the line are going to have to wait for it, and the higher the probability that the funding will run out before the project is completed. I want to say I have no reason to doubt the resolve of any of our funding partners on this. The city of Minot has been exceptional, as has the state of North Dakota, but I think it's important to state publicly that the joint board has a responsibility to act as, as public stew, as stewards of the, of the public funding that's being utilized on behalf of all the agencies that are funding that construction. So, Mr. Mayor, thanks for the time. I take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Ackerman at this time? Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. Ryan, can you maybe provide some clarity? Is it a flood wall? Is it a levee downtown on the south side of the bridge that's planned?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Pittner, alternatives 3B, 1, 2, and 3 were all primarily levee alternatives. The, the flood wall alternative that the mayor referenced was from the preliminary engineering report, which was done in March of 2012. The primary reason why that has shifted away from a flood wall is because there will no longer be closure structures installed across the BNSF mainline. And as a result of that, the, the alignment shifted south, and it appeared, it appears, at least based on what we know today, that the levee is the most cost-effective option.
Thank you, Alderman Pittner, and from sounds of it, we need to update our GIS then. Further questions for Mr. Ackerman? Thank you, Ryan. Other comments at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Shannon Straight, 115, 8th Avenue, Southeast Minot. As we begin a new year, Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate the comments before us. I, I want to provide a bigger vision of what's been transpiring over the past 11 years. I stand before you tonight as a member of the Friends of the Suris River. We started a organization to actively renew and restore our active river culture and promote the Minot Greenway. Over the last 11 years, if you think of West Minot to what I'm going to get to with Downtown Minot, we've seen a new park at Woodland, we've seen trails on top of the levee at Jack Holvin Park, we've seen an underpass at the 16th Street Bridge that safely allows pedestrians to move throughout town. We believe in front of us is going to be a reworking of the most dangerous cofferdam in the state at the water treatment plant, and we are optimistic that with funding for the Maple diversion, we're going to reconnect the Oak Park and Nubbin Park dead loops of the river, which would allow us to almost connect the three largest parks in Minot, Woodland, Oak, closer to downtown than getting us to Roosevelt Park. That brings us to downtown tonight and the importance of this bridge. As I stated before, our intent all along has been to say, yes, I was flooded, Mr. Mayor, I know you were as well. We can have flood protection, but we can have access, and we can renew a, a sense of what we have lost with the flood. This bridge is, is what does that tonight. Your yes vote on 3, on the alternative, is for greater access, is for greater renewal. Yeah, it comes with a whole string of challenges. I spoke before the park board last week, and I know that the park board wants to be at the table for solving the solution. I can't think of a greater team than the city of Minot, the park board, and our residents advocating for this, promoting downtown, promoting the governor's Main Street initiative, and taking this where we might be able to solicit the funds necessary to solve this issue. It's bigger than any one of us, I believe. We are going to liu lose the other historic bridge that is part of M15. It's the old bridge over the railroad tracks at the Ben's Tavern area, so we're losing one bridge already. Let's not lose them both. We ask you tonight for your yes vote, and we believe that you're going to get there because it's important to us, and I, I thank you for your time, sir. I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions at this time? Thank you, Shannon. Any other comments? Back at the dais, we do have a motion to put the project back on the CIP. And for my recollection here, which option are we looking at here, Madam Motion Maker?
I don't think any of the above, really. Because now I'm even more, so like, you know, the board's recommendation makes sense for a flood control, downtown makes sense, Downtown Association, downtown. I really feel like now, after tonight, we haven't explored even the whole thought of a new bridge, a bigger and better, not a bigger and better, but a better improved bridge. And so that makes me even more confident in making the motion only, you know, to, you know, keep access and to add it to CIP and explore even what a new bridge would look like cost-wise. I just feel like now, you know, this hasn't even really been brought to the table and talked about in a way that, again, and I can, that I feel like I can, can't make a meaningful decision, so.
Madam Motion Maker and, and council. It was more than a good college trial, we'll say this. I, I see you, Alderman Patagula, and I will come to you next. Amy Macbeth, who is the liaison that we deal with from BNSF, made it very clear that BNSF has no interest in any new bridge.
In paying for it, or in just?
Period.
Period.
Period. No new bridge, and that the lease that we are on right now is being held to the letter. So whatever that does mean, they're very interested in not having a bridge there. Period. So I don't want to open the whole can of worms to say that there's a whole lot of other opportunities that we haven't explored because BNSF has been very clear in my discussion. And I think if we had that discussion as our public works director and our city engineer and our city, city manager and, and myself, again, and that would be the exact message back from BNSF through the conversations and dealings that we've had, not only on, that I've had on the bridge, but even the negotiations in the, the crew quarter house on the, the north side of Main Street and the other bridge and other projects that we've had with, with the railroads. Not to say that they are not good community partners, but it, it has been very clear that they do have one mission, and that is what they're concerned with. Alderman Patagula.
Yes, following up on that, I'm obviously not privy to your discussions with the railroad, but it seems that the Downtown Association has brought forward some other options and other potential considerations or parameters, one of which is providing more safety in terms of people crossing at grade, and perhaps more importantly, improving the right-of-way for the railroad by increasing their, the height of cargoes they can carry. And I don't know if that's been discussed with them or if they've thought about that. Have they?
Alderman Patagula, yes, that was one of the points of discussion on a new bridge and better spans, better protection, no bridge, period.
So your understanding is that they're not interested in any kind of alternative to the current bridge that exists?
That is correct, Alderman Patagula.
Okay. Do we have that from an authoritative enough source from, of the railroad?
Looked to Mr. Jonison on Macbeth's official title, and I know she's going to watch this later and probably cringe that I can't remember it off the top of my head.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm not sure of her exact title, but basically she's like their marketing director, information officer for, for BNSF, for liaisons, liaison officer for BNSF.
Information officer is, yes, is how I've come back on those conversations. Alderman, Mr. City Manager.
If I may, a little bit here. So every community I've worked for in the past has had rail service, so I've dealt with railroads in the past. My experience has been, is any opportunity they have to remove any conflict with their rail lines, they will take that opportunity to do. It includes both at-grade and above-grade crossings when they can. That being said, just a couple of points here, as, as I've listened and observed over the last year, I'm, I'm the last one to the party on this. You guys have been discussing this and analyzing this for much longer than I've been here or had any interest in Minot. So maybe I can help add some perspective and just, and first of all and foremost, maybe this will help the council a little bit, too, going back again to the, the facilitation that we had earlier this year that has been referred to multiple times in this conversation. If you remember Dr. Now Bandian's presentation, he talked about the public service values and how those sometimes was coming into conflict. That's when we had difficulty making decisions on behalf of a community is when these values come into conflict. This was on page 3 and 4 of the pamphlet that was provided to you in the written materials as part of that. The two conflicts I see, or the two values coming into conflict I see here are efficiency and effectiveness. This is what you hire staff for, is to help you operate in a more efficient and effective and professional standpoint. This is recommendations from city staff, it's recommendations from the SRJB that do this professional analyzation of what's the most cost-effective, what's the most efficient solution, those types of things. That's one value. The second value that comes into conflict here is accountability and representation, political responsiveness, right? And that's really the crux of this whole conversation, which is, which is of higher priority in these values because you can't really get both at the same time. So is it more efficiency and effectiveness of keeping this project going forward, to continue to provide safety as, as quickly as we can with flood protection and do that in the most cost-efficient, cost-effective manner that we can, we can? And Mr. Ackerman laid out a very succinct recommendation for all those points that come underneath that value. But you've also heard significant and valuable input from the community, the Downtown Business Professional Association, and those types of things with regards to representation. What, what is the historic value of this? What community character can this provide to the downtown and the community as a whole? Those two conflicts are coming, those two values are coming into conflict, and really until you decide which one of those values is higher priority in this, in this decision, it's going to be difficult for you to make that decision. That being said, I also want to talk about, you know, we, we've been focusing a lot on what's being lost, but I haven't heard a whole lot of conversation over what's being gained from this. And just as, as a reminder, the city is, in my observation over the last several years, has done significant attention to the downtown area. We're building a new city hall down there. We're going to be community partners downtown, millions of dollars being spent there. You did a street infrastructure project through there. We, we still have a conversation coming forward with regards to the, the parking ramps and, and those types of things. We have great, significant private partnership downtown with multiple partners, including the most recent one with Epic and purchasing the in-building downtown. The city's also made significant commitments in trying to improve the downtown with the facade improvement grant program that we've implemented. So I don't want it to be lost that, that whatever the decision is on this, whether it's to save the bridge or demolish the bridge, I don't want this to be interpreted as the city council and staff don't care about downtown because you have a proven track record, a strong proven track record over the last several years of, of a dedication and investment to the community. So we are striving to be good partners in relation to the aspirations that you have identified going forward. But going back again to the efficiency and the effectiveness, you know, yes, there's two bridges that are being talked about. One is pretty much already, for all intents and purposes, a decision that it's going to be removed, and now we're talking about the second one with the Ann Street Bridge. But there's also significant improvements to the bridge on 3rd Street and improving pedestrian access there. I mean, if you, if you were able to pull back up the slide from DBPA on their presentation, either slides 8 or 12, in there, within a short, or fairly short space, you have pedestrian access on the 3rd Street Bridge, there's another one there in the middle, and then you have the Broadway Bridge that all have had significant improvements for pedestrian access to this area specifically. So again, my question would be, is what additional efficiencies are you gaining in spending another $3 million on a fourth bridge within this short span of space to this area? Anyway, so I don't know if that, that helps you or not. This is a conversation that's been going on for a long time, and, and so I'm also a little, I guess, to, to put it bluntly, a little disconcerted that this feels like a last-minute decision. We talked about this through the budget process, we talked about it through the CIP process where the council pulled it. We tried to engage the public. Those were public meetings, we tried to engage people through those processes, nobody engaged, nobody engaged. And now we're getting to the final hour, and now all of a sudden it's an emergency, nobody knows what's going on, and, and we haven't considered all factors on something that we've talked about for years, and even within the last 12 months have talked about significantly. So, and as Mr. Ackerman appropriately pointed out, time is money on this, you know? And to put it in perspective, you know, absorbing a 5% or 10% cost on a million-dollar project, that's probably pretty absorbable. But when you're talking on a 100-plus million-dollar project over the scope of all of this, 5% or 10% adds up very quickly and becomes very insurmountable over time. So those are just some, some key factors that I would encourage the council to consider. But again, to start, to finish where I started, the key crux to this whole conversation and this decision goes back to which of those public service values is of priority to you. And there's probably going to be differences of opinion on that, on the council, within the public, and those types of things, but ultimately, you as the council are elected to make that decision on behalf of the community. And I think until you can decide which of those values is more important, your decision is not going to be very clear.
Further questions or discussion? Alderwoman Evans.
So I just want to make a quick correction about the $3 million, right? We had from our public works director that that was an old number and that we're at between 1.4 and 1.6. I just.
If I may. Mr. City Manager.
So I think there's a misunderstanding there because I think we're, we're hearing the same thing but understanding it different ways. It's 1.6 million to do the SRJB, which is the south connection, and as Mr. Jonison said, is an additional $1 million to reconstruct the, the, the bridge at a minimum. So 1.6 plus 1 million is 2.6 million. I rounded up to 3 million.
Continue.
So in, in no way disparaging the information officer for BNSF, but I'm not confident that that is a position that actually, like, is a final authoritative decision-making in, in an organization like BNSF. Do you think it would be possible we could get something in writing from BNSF that would be more, like, sort of concrete?
Alderwoman Evans, the conversations that I had were, were more than just a phone call, "Do you think this was taking it up the line?", taking days, if not a week or more, to get back to me. So those were the conversations that took place. As far as in writing, I'm sure that they would provide it in writing, but it's not going to change
Okay.
the message.
Okay, I didn't, yeah, I just want a clarification that she just didn't, like, hey, no, and, you know, that she took the time to.
And Alderwoman Evans, in regards to Macbeth, we've dealt with her on many different occasions, and I would say she's been in her position for a very long time for, for a very good reason.
Thank you.
Further questions or discussion? Alderwoman Olson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll, I'm going to use my version of, of what the city manager just said because I agree with the comments that he made. When I was first elected, someone that was much wiser than I said, "You have to vote with your head and not your heart." And right now, we're all very nice people up here, and our hearts are being tugged because we look at something that has some historical value in our community, and we, we hear some impassioned requests from our citizens, and we're thinking with our hearts at that point. But we are elected to be the stewards of our community and the taxpayer dollars, and when we do that, we can't foolishly spend that money. We know that the most financially wise decision to make is to remove the bridge, and that is the direction that I'm hoping that the council goes this evening.
Alderman Janser.
Mr. Mayor, as I've sat here listening to the, to the ongoing discussion, the, the key thing that, that I've kept coming back to is the point that Alderman Pittner raised, which is, you know, is Burlington Northern going to allow, at this point, with the bridge out of use for, and in the condition that it's in for multiple years, going to allow either a reconstruction or starting from scratch with something new? or starting from scratch with something new? And it appears that you've provided the answer to that. And so for that reason, I'm not able to support the current motion of putting this back into the future plans for capital improvements unless we get a different signal from the railroad. I would point out that in the past where we have tried to negotiate with every bit of leverage that we possibly could, including our congressional delegation, to get the railroad to see things our way, those efforts were unsuccessful. And I fear that we're in the same situation with this particular issue. And so I guess unless we get a different signal or unless something changes, I'm not able to support the current motion.
Alderman Ross.
You knew this was coming, right? You know, at the last meeting, I challenged Josh and Shannon in the Downtown Business Association to, you had to knock my socks off. I wasn't seeing it the way that you guys were seeing it in your downtown association. I've had some conversations and, you know, there's a story to be told. And we can go far past the historical value of the Ann Street Bridge. I wasn't, I was all for tearing it down for the same reasons that Councilwoman Olson But I listened to the stories, and yeah, there's a lot of what-ifs that have to take place. But we're looking at a project that we can potentially combine city efforts, park district efforts, and school district efforts to provide access to downtown. Yes, we have it at Broadway. Yes, we have it at Third Street. I totally agree with that. But this is something that there's a potential for to get from downtown to the green space, the new green space. And it's with everything that's going on downtown, I, you know, we can approve this. We can go through and approve this concept, and the railroad could come in and say, "Nope, you haven't used it in two years or three years." And they could jump on the lease and take it all. Well, but they haven't done that in two or three years. So it must not be a very critical to them to remove it. They've had an opportunity to flex their muscles. I'm concerned that we really haven't had a high-level face-to-face discussion with the railroad about this. And I know what you said, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate those comments, but I think this is, I mean, this is a much higher level. This is face-to-face if we can, and maybe we can't. I don't know. I'm being naive about it. But I think we can go through and approve it, and I'm going to vote to approve it. You guys did what I asked you to do, and not just you, Josh and Shannon. I mean, the phone calls I got from the public, the stories I heard from the public, and it's not about, it's not all about heart, you know? Sometimes you've got to go with your heart, you know? There's nothing wrong with that. But if you take into consideration what this is going to do for traffic for schools when we have a new middle school going there, which a majority of those kids walk, and you've got the park district asking to be at the table to provide access to the green space or even to be a part of this project, and you've got us, you know? And with the aspirations that we went through last May and June and with what's going on downtown, you know, I think this is a wonderful opportunity. A lot of things have to fall into place perfectly. They really do. And they still may be leaning against everybody who supports the bridge, but let's give it a shot. Let's take it. Let's take it to the wall. Let's take it to the finish line, and you know what? We can come back and we can come back at the next meeting, and Burlington Northern probably has, you know, the wrecking crews out there. So be it. But you know what? I'm not going to turn away everybody who called me, emailed me, texted me, asked me to save this bridge because there's an important story, and there's an important vital future for this bridge. It's critical. I'm voting for it. Thank you.
Alderman Podgula.
I wanted to echo what Alderman Ross just said. I'm going to be supporting this motion in terms of what it holds for the future, not for the past. I wasn't willing to spend a million and a half bucks to preserve an old bridge. I don't think it has sufficient historical value, but I think things have changed in the past six months or year. And because of that, I think it has more opportunity and holds more potential for the community. I don't see it as some archaic historical landmark, although I should point out that several cities build their identities around bridges, the Golden Gate Bridge in San Francisco and even the Lift Bridge in Duluth, which isn't all that different from Minot. But that's not my reason for supporting this. I think things have changed significantly. For one thing, downtown is becoming much more vibrant, and I appreciate the City Manager's perspective on that. We have invested a lot of money and effort, and I think in some ways this would be the icing on the cake. One thing I see happening is the Downtown Association is now much more active and much more unified than I've ever seen it. And I think their lobbying efforts, their educational efforts on this have been really exceptionally good. I think we now have more traffic between downtown and other parts of the city with Central Campus becoming a reality, becoming a middle school. And this isn't just for the students, it's also potentially for employees, teachers and staff who want to work in another, who want to live in another portion of the community and walk downtown. The Big M Building with 36 apartments coming up, that's within the past month. But for me, the biggest change, the biggest reason for supporting this is that 13 acres of green space opening up by the river. Without this bridge, access to that will be dramatically limited. Yes, there will be a tunnel underneath a railroad track. I biked that tunnel. The Third Street via duct is not really good for bicycle traffic. The walking may be acceptable, but last time I biked there was very difficult because of the uneven pavement on the sidewalk. And I think the young gentleman who spoke earlier about fumes from cars and things like that, the two bridges we have now are not the greatest for pedestrians or for bicycles. But I think opening up that area, right now it's not usable. The railroad owns it. It'll be bought from the railroad, hopefully, if negotiations are successful. And that'll be a big part of that Emerald Necklace going through mine, out of green space, recreational space, of educational activity space, birding areas. The Autumn on Society is committed to spending a good deal of money on improving nature areas by the river. So I think keeping the access to that area that now will be usable for a change, it won't just be a rail yard or a parking lot for the railroad, is a really key point for me. And that, I think, for me, justifies supporting that bridge. I also think that we now at least have some suggestions that we might be starting with a clean slate. I'm impressed with the statement of the Downtown Association in terms of some of the assumptions that we've been making perhaps aren't accurate and need to be reassessed. In terms of your contacts with the railroad, I mean, no disrespect to you or the representative of the railroad, but I think we're talking with a public relations or at most a governmental relations person. Until I see it in writing from an officer of Burlington Northern Santa Fe, I'm not going to see it as a done deal, and I don't think we've had that yet. Again, an official officer-to-officer relationship between Burlington Northern Santa Fe as a corporation and its officers, and the city of Minot as a municipal corporation with you as its chief officer, Mr. Mayor. I don't feel we have that level of confidence quite yet. And it may turn out, like Tom was saying, that they're not going to do anything. But again, the bridge hasn't been used for three years. We haven't seen a wrecking crew there. We need to know one way or the other definitively from someone who can make an authoritative decision on behalf of the railroad, what their parameters are going to be. And I think one of the good things about the Downtown Association's educational efforts has been to point out that we've been making a lot of assumptions that maybe we need to check out and be sure that they're true. I think if we have a partner now in Suris River Joint Board improving access on the south side of the river with the bridge in terms of flood control project, I think we should accept that. I don't think it's fair for them to be the primary funding source or the primary lobbying force or negotiating force, but I think they bring things to the table that we didn't have before. So for all those reasons, I'm going to be supporting this. I see this as a step toward the future, not just as a remembrance of the past.
Further comments? Alderman Pittner.
Thank you, Mayor. I think like everybody here, I probably came in with more questions than answers at the end of this. Some of the questions that I have, and with all due respect to the City Manager's position that we never had public input or engagement back in June, things change. We now have a school bond that was approved by the city of Minot, putting a middle school downtown and increasing walking traffic for young children. We also had a public survey that came back at our last meeting at the behest of our City Manager that encouraged us to get one, and it screamed for better walking paths, more connectivity for the city of Minot, for the community members. Things change. More information is gathered, more information that we might come into ownership of the old GOB yard for the railroad. Like the mayor, I thought it was a flood wall through downtown according to our GIS map. That is not the case. Things change. We don't have all the information, and we're asked to make decisions. Alderwoman Olson had mentioned that we're to be the stewards of tax dollars, and I agree. I appreciate Mr. Ackerman's wearing his Suris River Joint Board hat and saying this is the most cost-effective way. That doesn't always mean it's the best. It doesn't always mean it's the most effective and efficient. Well, it does mean it's the most effective and efficient because it's spend the least amount of money and get it done as quickly as possible. We're at that crux. We're at that crux of political responsiveness and responsibility to our constituents and being stewards of the dollars. Again, I always draw these parallels to my own. To be cost-effective and efficient in my own house is to not get a kitchen remodel. But I need to be responsive to my constituents, my children, my wife, who I have to live with. Guess what? We're going to get a kitchen remodel, okay? There's more questions than answers that I have. Will the railroad even permit repairs? I don't know at this point. None of us do. We can speculate. According to Dan, we've tried to avoid bringing this up in conversations as much as possible, and I respect that. Funding mechanisms for land acquisitions, particularly on the dry side, whether it be a wall or levy, maybe within the discussion, maybe it's not. A wall versus a levy, particularly when running through the downtown east and west of the Ann Street Bridge. Again, I have more questions than answers, and the biggest hang-up for myself on this is, once we lose it, it is gone. I have little hope of a new bridge, and I'll take your word. I don't need a letter, Mayor. BN's not going to permit a new bridge above the railroad. I get it. I've got nothing wrong with that. If we can maintain our access and maintain our asset and maintain our identity, I'm willing to give it a shot. I'll support the motion as it is. I have no problem putting it in the CIP. We're going to have to put it back in there. If we're going to look for additional funding outside of state or federal or local tax dollars, whether it be grant programs, anything like that, we have to have it in the CIP. I'll approve it. Let's go down the rabbit hole because I do believe this has the potential to be a great asset for the community and improve our community and make it a better community to live, work, and play in. I'll support it.
Well, as everyone else has had an opportunity, I will keep my comments short. First and foremost, my contact at BNSF has been the same contact that we have utilized through pretty much all avenues of discussion when it comes to things official. So it does bother me a little bit that you're not going to take my word that I know who I'm talking to and what I'm talking about there. The other side is quite a few of these assumptives, whether it be new bridge or whether it be reconfiguring the makeup of the bridge on BNSF land or maybe city of Minot land once we acquire it, doesn't change the BFE, the base flood elevation if we drop something right down into the middle of the floodway. Flood 2.0 just rolled out in October, 60% increase in flood insurance premiums. Every time we kick the can down the road and make something longer, it's only driving flood insurance costs higher and costing this project to go higher. I get it. I like the Ann Street Bridge too. I've ridden it. I rode on it before it was shut down because of disrepair. I went down to the state legislature and I testified before the committee to try to get some state funding, $2 million for this project. The state didn't want to fund it. Contacted the governor's office and talked with a number of his policy folks, looking for any kind of grants to fund this. We're at the 11th and a half hour here again on a project. I've spent a considerable amount of time looking for money, and I have not been able to find anything outside of proposed tax reserves or out of our current city sales tax that's geared towards sidewalks and streets and infrastructure. I think we've got to get ahead of the ball here if we're going to start pulling these back and forth and deciding long-term implications. I'm not going to support it. We have a motion to put the project back on the CIP.
Can she just read it back one more time to make sure? Because I know we went back and forth.
Michaela.
I believe the motion was to keep access to Ann Street Bridge and move back to the CIP. Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure because we went back and forth.
We have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Evans? Both the head and heart are saying yes. Janzer?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
Yes.
Podgula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sipma?
No.
Motion is approved. That takes us to 9.2, which has actually been pulled. Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, it asks that this be pulled. Contractors made significant progress. We provided a letter today extending deadline due to some weather issues with the recent storm and those kinds of things. They're doing work on the roof. So in consultation with the library director, we've extended their time for compliance until the Friday prior to the next council meeting. So if work is not completed by then, we will put it back on the agenda, but hopefully everything is resolved by then to the satisfaction of city staff.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Moving on, 9.3 is the removal of payroll and human capital management phases from the Enterprise Resource Planning the ERP project agreement with Tyler Technologies. On November 30, 2021, City Council approved a memorandum of understanding, the MOU on the Tyler Technologies, Inc., outlining the requirements for a proof-of-concept demonstrations of the payroll and human capital management phases for the city's Enterprise Resources planning project at the December 17, 2021, meeting. Tyler failed to demonstrate the system's ability to perform within the city's software environment and did not exhibit the agreed-upon data provided by the city per the outlined requirements. The city then extended a second opportunity to Tyler to meet the requirements outlining the MOU with a deadline to December 24, 2021. Review of this information by staff shows the data entered by Tyler was still not correct, nor was the system set up to the specifications originally agreed upon. Rather than expend any further time or effort on the Tyler Technologies, Human Resource Staff recommends the city discontinue implementation of the applicable phases. The recommendation to the City Council is to exercise options 3AI from the memorandum of understanding, the MOU with Tyler Technologies, Inc., and amend agreement with Tyler to remove the payroll in human capital management project phases.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to approve, second by Alderman Janzer. Any discussion on the motion? Alderwoman Evans.
Perhaps City Manager can answer this. I'm in support of this, but what is the alternative? Where does this leave us?
Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Alderwoman Evans, just to provide some background, so the current software that the city uses to process this payroll and employee paperwork and all those types of things, we've been notified by the software company that, as old as it is, that we will not be eligible for any updates to it after December of 2022, so the end of this year, which is why we were hoping to get progress with Tyler. So that was in place prior to our current software no longer being reliable. Tyler did make some progress, but not sufficient for staff that we feel comfortable in taking the risk on moving forward with them. We don't want to run into any issues of reliability. IRS does not take mistakes financially with employee payroll very kindly, and that's not a position we want to be in, and we don't want to put our employees in that position either. So basically, alternative is, we, the mayor talked earlier about being at the 11th and a half hour, really at the 12th hour on this as far as making a decision. We gave Tyler as much time as we possibly could to fix this. At this point, it's going to be a pretty tight timeline even now to turn this around, but we're going to have to rebid and find a different software provider to provide this to us and then get all that done prior to the software no longer being updatable. We have a little bit of wiggle room, I think, going into early part of next year, maybe for a few months, where the integrity of the software will hold out, but we need to get on this as quickly as possible. So we'll be developing RFP. Staff will bring that forward. We'll seek bids. We'll go through the whole process. And then once someone is selected, we go through the whole process again and trying to convert everything over, make sure the software works again, it's reliable, so we can get this done in a fashion that we can rely on and... again, it's reliable, so we can get this done in a fashion that we can rely on and make sure the paperwork and the financial calculations are all processed correctly.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Alderman Padrigula.
I wanted to follow up on that and say a couple of things and ask some more questions. I guess first of all, I want to express my sympathy to you, Harold, and to Lisa and your crew for having to deal with this for, what, 21 months now? So it's even predated you showing up on the scene, Harold. From what I can gather, this has been an enormous expenditure of staff time that could have been and should have been spent on other things. I also get the feeling that we're being jerked around by this company, and I don't like that. I think it's caused significant inconvenience and expense to our staff. It's caused inconvenience and, I think, expense to the general employee, and it's cost money for the city, and that doesn't make me feel at all comfortable. I don't think there's any other alternative except looking for another contractor, and hopefully things will go much more smoothly. The question I want to ask is, are we essentially getting a full refund from Tyler? And the second part of that question would be, what about our costs and the inconvenience we've suffered? Economists talk about an opportunity cost. When you spend your money on one thing, it keeps you from spending it on anything else, and I think that's the position we've been in with city staff and also in terms of our finances. We've been spinning our wheels on this thing. So if I could have a concise answer to my not-so-concise question, are we getting a full refund of everything we've spent on this, and what about our costs and inconvenience we've suffered?
To answer your question concisely, no, we're not getting a full refund. As we've tried to negotiate with Tyler, they weren't willing to take into account the staff, time, and investment. We are getting a full refund of anything that we've paid to Tyler in relation to the software itself. That was the intent of the memorandum of understanding. That being said, and again, to be concise, I think even Tyler would admit this is unprecedented territory for them. They have not negotiated M O Us like this with cities before to even rebate any of these funding back. So I think city staff has done its effort to minimize the loss as much as we possibly can and pushed Tyler to their limits of what they're willing to agree to, and what's before you tonight is your best alternative.
I guess following up on that, and I appreciate your goodwill and good faith efforts to try to resolve this, I think that's what we have to look at. But I'm also concerned about getting some of our money back in terms of the time that we've wasted on this and trying to make a go of it. I mean, it seems like you and Lisa and the other people and Dave have worked very, very hard on this and spent a great deal of time and effort on it. And, you know, I realize we need to be solution-focused here, but I'm also concerned about the expenses the city has suffered, and I would like to see some sort of an analysis from a legal standpoint, if we have any recourse. If not in this contract, I want to make sure something like this doesn't happen again. Again, you were involved with it more than I have been, but I don't get the sense that this company has really been standing behind what they claim they would be offering us, and that doesn't seem right to me. And I'd like to have some sense of what recourse we have against them, if any, just because they've never done anything like this before. I'm still not comfortable with what this has cost all of us.
Mr. City Manager.
If I may, I mean, we've included the city attorney, Hendershot, in the conversations through this. I mean, ultimately, I mean, the city always has the right to file a lawsuit against Tyler and go through that. The probability of winning and those types of things is undetermined at this point. You're going to also spend more staff time and resources to have that fight. I will tell you, Minot is not the only community frustrated with this process. There is the potential of other cities partnering with that, but again, that's a long legal battle. It's expensive. I think the council understands, you know, some of the legal battles that we've been through already that have finally gotten resolution, how long that takes and how much money is spent in those battles. And again, at this point, you know, considering recouping as much money as we possibly can. In addition, we still have software with Tyler for our financial systems that we still need to operate and use, so we still have a contract remaining with Tyler. We're not canceling the whole contract, we're just simply removing the suites with regards to the H R perspective, and they are refunding pretty much all the money that we've paid them with regards to those licenses and that work, but we aren't recouping the amount of time and investment that we've spent in our own payroll of staff dealing with this for the last 20-plus months. So, but again, city attorney Hendershot can respond to that question more adequately if you prefer, but they've been involved, and we've tried to take all steps with their involvement in being part of that process of negotiating.
Do you need any further clarification from the city attorney?
Yes, and I really appreciate your managerial perspective on that, Harold, and your outsider's perspective, too. I guess I'd also like to hear from our attorney.
Ms. Hendershot.
Alderman Padrigula and Mr. Mayor, that was something that we had attempted to obtain from Tyler during our negotiations of the M O U that was approved by the council last month. We were not successful in getting that from, in getting them to agree with that. It's not included in the contract as something that can be included as damages. How we negotiated the M O U was actually not exactly consistent with how we would have sought damages, I guess, through the contract. I don't know if I can, if I'm explaining that very well, but it was a little bit different just because of how it proceeded and that the implementation didn't work, and we'd already expended costs and that there wasn't an actual claim date, things like that. So we did our best to try and get what we could, and we, like the city manager said, we obtained all of the costs that had been expended to Tyler on those types of the softwares, the products, and the costs of staff were not something that Tyler was willing to include in the M O U. And that is what governs the amendment, and that was already approved by the city council.
So if I understand correctly, it's as good a deal as we could get?
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate, and I appreciate your efforts. It's not a criticism of you or of Harold, but I guess the other thing is that this has happened before, and I don't want it to happen again. I know we can't predict the future, completely control it, but on our agenda, we had two items today of people failing to follow through on what they contracted with the city. We had the library construction project and repair project, which has been deferred, discussion of which has been deferred for another two weeks, and I think that's a good idea to give the contractor another last chance to get things settled. But my concern is that I don't want this to keep happening in the future again. Now, I understand, again, we can't completely control it, but I really would like the administration to pay a little bit more attention, I mean, in a critical sense, but I'd like us to devote a little bit more energy to trying to make sure that the city gets a fair deal. And we've talked before about the need to be good stewards of funds, but I think, again, if we contract with people and they don't follow through and we incur a lot of expense, we should at least try to make a better deal there going forward. So I would ask the city staff to be more attentive to that in the future. Again, not saying they haven't been attentive, but I think history has shown that sometimes in dealing with private companies, they are not interested in our welfare or their citizens' welfare, the taxpayers' welfare as much as we are.
If I may, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. City Manager.
And staff is already doing that. If you recall, with the new city hall contract, there were daily penalties included within that contract. In fact, it was something that was a bit resisted. As we talked with our consultant, there was some fear that that would increase the bid prices that we received back in an effort to try and decrease cost, encourage staff to remove those provisions out of the contract, and precisely for these reasons, we held to that, to leave that in, so that there is a daily penalty if it's not completed or delivered appropriately. So we are trying to clarify that in contracts going forward.
That's very good. I'm glad to hear that. I also would point out, too, that in the past, we've also reinforced and rewarded people for getting work done on time. I remember on the old Berdick Viaduct on the east side of downtown, we offered them a completion bonus, and I think they got it done like one or two months early, and they were, maybe not richly, but significantly rewarded for their hard work, and we were rewarded by having our citizens being able to use that viaduct much earlier than we had expected. So I think this combination of carrots and sticks hopefully will be more successful in the foregoing future. And again, no criticism intended here, but I think it's something we need to be on top of.
Any further discussion on the motion to approve? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve the item. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padrigula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 9.4 is the Railroad Quiet Zone, 2021's study, item 3308.1. Over the past year, staff and S R F have been reviewing the quiet zone options along the C P corridor through Minot. The study is now complete and ready to be received by the city. Two recommendations. First is council receive and file the report, and two, staff is requesting direction whether to place the project in the upcoming capital improvements plan. Mr. City Engineer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, I have Andy Melkey with me from S R F. He was our consultant on this project. Hopefully, he's still on the phone. Our meeting went a little longer than what I thought, but good discussion, and we're going to have another good discussion here on a quiet zone for downtown. We've been working on this project now for about a year, meeting with individuals downtown, looking at different concepts and trying to optimize really the different crossing protection measures that could be installed to give us a good project, meet those thresholds that we need to establish a quiet zone, and at the same time, try to minimize property owner impacts. If you'll remember, this was an update to a study done about 10 years ago in 2011, and since that time, there's been significant amount of work that's been done on the C P main line to upgrade their technology, and some of that we've even cost shared with them on through the N D D O T on some of those crossing upgrade projects. So over time, federal funds and our own funds have lowered the cost of this quiet zone to something that I think is manageable, and Andy's going to walk you through the information, and we'll be here to answer any questions you have, and if you decide to move forward with a project, we will start working on that in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. City Engineer. Good evening, Mr. Melkey.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your time this evening. I did prepare a brief presentation, and I'm not sure if you've got that available. If not, I can share my screen.
May I ask our public information officer here to see if he's able to bring up the PowerPoint? If not, he is saying no. If you would, go ahead and share your screen, sir. I think we've got all of our inputs tied up with you on screen.
That's quite all right. Hopefully, you can see that there?
We can, yes. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, good. Let me first start off by saying, my name is Andy Melkey. I'm with S R F Consulting Group. I've been working on quiet zones for over 15, 16 years now. It's been a pleasure to work with Lance and Stefan and the rest of your team here at the city of Minot. What I'm going to do here is just walk you through a little bit of a background on quiet zones and really some background here in Minot. So this is a map here of the city's rail crossings that are in front of you. The yellow dots here on the B N S F line are already part of an existing quiet zone that was done about six, seven years ago as part of an improvement project along the B N S F railway. This current effort here really looked at the C P rail line, so the two blue dots out here on Ethan 9th, the four downtown crossings, and then the two green crossings, the two green dots here at the Amtrak Depot and Maple Street. Hopefully, you can see those on the screen accordingly. Before I go into too much detail on what the improvements and potential recommendations might be, I wanted to just give you a little background on what a quiet zone is and how one qualifies for a quiet zone. It is a little bit of a unique process, and therefore, I want to just give you a quick background, and I'll go through rather quickly. I can certainly back up, or if anybody's got any questions, feel free to interrupt me as I'm proceeding here. So a quiet zone is really just a section of railroad where the routine sounding of a horn is not allowed, and the importance here is really routine. It does allow for a train engineer to sound the horn if he or she has some imminent danger. If there's a person or something on the tracks, they can sound the horn in case of an emergency, but the routine sounding of horns, which they're required to sound four times per crossing, would cease with the implementation of a quiet zone. The minimum requirements are that a quiet zone is at least a half mile in length and that all the crossings within it meet the qualifications and the criteria that is established, and that is listed here below in terms of having vehicle gates at the crossing and flashing lights, power out indicators, and constant warning time detectors. And this is an important one, as some of the crossings do not meet this current criteria. There's a whole risk level associated with it, and that's really how you qualify for a quiet zone. So the implementation is really based on a risk analysis, and it uses a Department of Transportation D O T accident prediction model, which largely is based on highway volumes and speed, rail volumes and speed, and then there's a whole bunch of criteria here based on the roadway characteristics as well as a crash history. And that, the large ones are obviously vehicle speed, vehicle volumes, train speed, and train volumes. There's three different risk levels that need to be considered. There's a nationwide significant risk threshold. That is essentially the national average. There's a risk index with horns. That is essentially the risk of trains that are out there today sounding their horns. And then there's a quiet zone risk index, and this is the risk level after the corridor has been adjusted for the loss of horn and the increased safety improvements that are made throughout the corridor. And essentially, you have to get the quiet zone risk index reduced with safety improvements. You're lowering that risk of the horn sounding by making roadway improvements, and the quiet zone risk index has to be below either that risk index with horns, the current condition, or the national average. If you get below the risk index with horns, then it's exempt from changes in the national average. That's updated every year, and essentially, you're making the zone safer than when the horns are sounding, which would be your current condition today. There are a couple of different ways to qualify for a quiet zone, so the roadway improvements or other mechanisms that would allow for a quiet zone. They're summarized here, and I'll just briefly walk through each one in its entirety. So a four-quadrant gate is essentially adding the two exit gates to an existing crossing. So each crossing must have the entrance gates on it. This would add the exit gates. Because all this work is done on the railroad right-of-way, the railroad essentially controls the whole process for that, and hence, there's a railroad agreement that would be required. There's an annual maintenance cost that goes along with it. It is an expensive measure. However, the good news is that there are no access or driveway impacts due to this. So if you've got a situation where you've got a lot of driveways nearby, this is an improvement that would allow for access to be, you know, whether it be a public roadway or a driveway, for instance, but it is a rather costly improvement. It does have a significant risk reduction here noted on the bottom, roughly 80% risk reduction for each crossing that this would be used at. This is an example here of a project that was done in Fargo. This is actually in downtown Fargo here. You can see the two exit gates going down, and then on this side here is the, are the two entrance gates, and then the exit gate going down here. The next one is non-traversable medians, channelization devices. These are simple medians that are right down the middle of a roadway, for instance, similar to a boulevard-type street configuration that you might be familiar with. Because it's a roadway improvement, the city controls the installation, scheduling, and cost. They have a similar risk reduction as four-quadrant gates, and the costs, you know, they range depending on if right-of-way is needed and what the overall street design would require. Here's a picture of non-traversable medians, basically just a strip of concrete going down the middle of the roadway with some signs on the front end to keep motorists to the right side of the median. This is an example of channelization devices, so these paddles, this can be installed right on the roadway. These work well for locations in, you know, temperate climates, for instance, but, you know, in the north where we get a lot of snow, for instance, they are oftentimes problematic to maintain in snow and ice conditions. The next picture here shows another problem that happens, is these sometimes can break off and therefore become a maintenance nightmare for public works crews and things as they have to be replaced in order to maintain their status with the Federal Railroad Administration. Closures are another example that can be used, and obviously, this would be, you know, removing the roadway surface from the railroad tracks, so essentially, there's no longer a crossing there that has 100% risk reduction with it, of course, since there's no traffic crossing the tracks anymore. One-way streets are an option. Now, this is something that is a little bit unique, is it oftentimes comes with some other trade-offs in terms of traffic circulation and things that need to be considered. Is there a gate relocation or a street conversion that would have to be done as part of it? They're typically done as one-way pairs, as one would imagine, and has a similar risk reduction. Wayside horns are the final tool in the toolbox, essentially, and this is the stationary device here that's kind of located on this pole that basically would sound, it would eliminate, it would have a sound that goes along with it to eliminate the sound of the train horn, and there is a relatively, a relative cost with this, about $100,000. And there is a relatively, a relative cost with this, about $100,000. There's an annual maintenance cost and things, this is all tied into the train gate system as well. So there are no access impacts, but again, because it's railroad right of way, the railroad would control the installation and everything. Getting back to the actual project here in the city of Minot, after that brief education there on quiet zones, we did a diagnostic meeting and this meeting was held on February 24th of 2021. And we did a site review at all of the Canadian Pacific railroad crossings. And the intent of that, of that meeting, of this diagnostic meeting, was to identify potential crossing improvements. And it included representatives from the city and the FRA, the Federal Rail Administration, the North Dakota DOT, and the CP railroad, of course. And as part of this discussion, we identified a whole host of improvements that could potentially be made at each crossing to qualify for a quiet zone. And the recommendations of that then, that we wanted to bring forward for your consideration here tonight, would be the installation of a four quadrant gate system at Third Street Southeast. And the reason that this improvement was recommended was because of some existing driveway locations that are surrounding this crossing as well as the presence of First Avenue Southeast here. In order to put medians at this crossing, which would be a more economical improvement, there would have been a lot of driveway relocation and street relocation work that would have had to been done. So four quadrant gates became the preferred alternative for this particular crossing. The next proposed improvement that we had was at Central Avenue East, where we did propose to install medians at, on both sides of this crossing. And we'd have to eliminate some of the existing railroad access that's out there today, these driveways, that's the red Xs here, and extend the curb line here on the south side of Central Avenue, allowing for a smaller, reduced width driveway here to this, to this facility here. And then the last improvement that we were proposing would be to install the railroad gates, vehicle gates, at the Third Street Amtrak Depot here. So these are the, the orange gate mechanisms here that would be proposed, as well as then installing a median along the depot, the Amtrak Depot entrance. So we'd have a 60-foot median on this side and an 80-foot median on this side that would meet the specifications for the Federal Railroad Administration. So the recommended crossing improvements would then be the Third Street Southeast, four quadrant gates, with a rough estimated cost of just over $400,000. The Central Avenue East medians at a cost just over $100,000. And then the gate installation and medians at the Third Street Amtrak Depot crossing at roughly $390,000 for a total cost of approximately $895,000 for these three crossing improvements. The summary, summarizing this potential quiet zone here, all of the crossings along the Canadian Pacific line would be included in this proposed quiet zone. So it would include the crossings at both Eighth and Ninth Avenue Southeast, the four downtown crossings from Third Street Southeast to Main Street North, and then the Third Street Amtrak Depot as well. The Maple Street crossing would eventually be removed as part of the Maple diversion Essentially going back to our map here, both the blue crossings, Eighth and Ninth, or downtown ones, and then the two green dots at both the depot and Maple Street would all be included in this proposed quiet zone. And then the existing quiet zone along the BNSF would also be included. So essentially, all of the crossings within the city of Minot would be part of the proposed quiet zone. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. I'll try to stop sharing my screen here if I can figure out how to do that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Melkey. And maybe if you just want to keep it up, I do have a question about that Central Avenue crossing. As I am aware that some of those Xs represented cutting off access to some of the different businesses, and I know a couple of them are even here, and have concerns about losing access to their delivery points on their business. How is that quantified within this? And are there any alternatives or other ideas on how they can still maintain their business with this crossing change?
Certainly. And I'll just, I'll go back to sharing my screen here for a moment. Hopefully you can see that there. Apologize if it looks, can you see that?
We can, yes.
Okay, perfect. Apologize if it looks as if I'm not looking at the camera, I'm trying to look at the screen here so I can give you a little play-by-play. But yes, that is something that, that city staff and our team did consider. I know we had a meeting in the middle of September to discuss business access specifically. And we certainly want to be conducive to the downtown businesses and traffic circulation as well as deliveries and the need to keep a vibrant downtown. The Xs here identify the driveway relocations that are currently on railroad right of way. And because they're on railroad right of way, they don't have to be official driveways. Essentially, if Canadian Pacific wants to access them, they would just drive over the curb. In regards to deliveries and things, you know, we are extending this, the curb line on the south side of Central Avenue to just reduce that driveway width there. And there would be, you know, other avenues, I guess, there where parking would have to be just beyond the median areas. The medians here on this particular crossing, as noted on the top, would be roughly 50 feet on the west side of the crossing, 100 feet on the east side. So if there's a FedEx truck or a UPS truck, hopefully they could park.
Mr. Melkey, if I can just interrupt you here on the upper left-handed X is the one specifically I'm talking about. We're not talking about FedEx. We're talking about large equipment delivery into their building on their only access point.
Sure. So to that, to that, I believe, I think on the next crossing there, I believe just off to the northwest portion of the screen here, would be the, the actual way that they would have to get in. And I know we considered that when we were having discussions with, with some of the business owners as well and in that, you know, they'd have to, you know, we'd have to oppose closing that driveway there, the red X on the northwest portion of the crossing here to account for that. But that, that would be how we would, how they would have to get in and out from there.
Mr. Melkey, if you could go to the previous slide because the, the next crossing, I believe, is just on the other side of that building.
Correct. Let me, yeah. So this is actually Third Street. I don't have a slide of that. I apologize for not having a slide of that, but.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Melkey at this time? I see a few hands up here. Alderman Potagula, you had your hand up first.
A comment and a couple of questions. First of all, I wanted to thank you for your very understandable, non-engineering language presentation. I think I understand quiet zones better than I ever have. And I also wanted to compliment our city traffic engineer for doing a very, very in-depth presentation of these issues at the last Renaissance Zone Committee. Between the two of you, I think I understand this better than I ever have. So kudos to you, both of you. The two questions I had, one has to do with the time, with the sound, the volume, the loudness of the fixed horn versus a railroad horn. I understand they're about the same. Is that correct?
Yes, they're, they're about the same. The, the wayside horns, while they are a suitable, suitable improvement for quiet zones, and I want to be careful here to not advocate for or against, the decibel ratings on them are, train horns are about 110 decibels. The wayside horns are a little under 100, somewhere in the 90 to 100 range. If it's peace and quiet, that one is desiring for a quiet zone, there's still going to be a noticeable sound with them, I guess. That'd be the short answer to your question, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. The second question I had was you mentioned that Maple Street would go away with the Maple Street diversion. Is there any chance of reusing some of that equipment or what would happen to the equipment that's currently there?
Yeah, that's a great question, Mr. Alderman, and something that oftentimes comes up in these discussions. Unfortunately, the railroads, they more or less break everything down and they, they take it away. And any chance that that discussion comes up about reusing them, you know, can't you just take the ones from Maple and put it on the depot, for instance, and, you know, pay for a little labor to essentially do some cost sharing? They, they just don't allow it. We ask about that every time and there's a lack of compatibility in equipment and other specifics tied to the crossings, what have you, that prevents that from happening. But it is something that we do inquire about. Unfortunately, never seems to really work out that way.
Well, thank you for your concern about our pocketbooks. And the final question I had, which has just come to my mind, is in terms of a public works perspective, in terms of particularly snow plowing, are there any issues with those central medians? I know you showed us that temporary one or that one with the, with the signs that got, got torn off very easily. Does this make life harder for public works?
Mr. Alderman, that's an excellent question and I certainly would, would concur that it probably doesn't make their lives easier. However, you know, medians along roadways, assuming you have the appropriate roadway width to account for them, you know, allowing for a 10, 11, or 12-foot or more traveling, snowplows would be able to get through. It is something that I know the city engineer and I did discuss regarding parking and the need to maybe restrict some parking through there just for that section of median, for instance, to allow snowplows to provide adequate snow removal areas. But, you know, there would be some minor trade-offs.
Right. I guess that was one of my thoughts about the Maple Street crossing right now. It seems pretty narrow, even with my car. And I think we have to make life as easy as we can for our, our public works folks. But thank you, I appreciate that perspective.
Yes, and if I could add just one more comment. In our calculations, we did not account for the closure of Maple Street because of the timing and the sequencing of when that closure would occur. Essentially, we, we were looking to propose a quiet zone that would meet the FRA's requirements without having Maple Street closed because Maple Street might close, from my understanding, a few years after maybe what the quiet zone could be implemented on. So if the quiet zone, you know, were to be delayed and account for the closure of Maple Street or Maple Street would be closed, that helps to lower that risk reduction even more as well. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that, maybe in regards to the mayor's question about local business access. There still would need to be something that's central, but maybe not as, as much perhaps. So it's somewhat of a sequencing, timing issue as well.
Alderman Evans.
Thank you. Mr. Melkey, with the different SSMs, tell me about the process by which you and the group of people making these recommendations, like, how do you come up with, like, what was best for Third Street? What was best for Central Avenue? What goes into that?
Excellent question, Ms. Alderman. Really, what, part of that discussion at the diagnostic meeting is to look at, at each crossing individually and, you know, which of the tools in the toolbox essentially could be applied at each one. So for instance, in the case of Third Street Southeast, for instance, there, there were numerous driveways and access locations in and around that crossing that, that made the medians essentially not, not applicable for that crossing. And so therefore, when we looked at, at the crossing itself, if we were going to do something, we, we ultimately ended up with a four quadrant gate as probably the preferred alternative. This also took into account the risk of each crossing. And in the case of, and I'm just going to try to go a previous slide here, for Third Street Southeast, for instance, here on the screen, Third Street Southeast is the, has the crossing that has the highest risk of all eight crossings on the Canadian Pacific line. So this was really the, the one that we knew we needed to treat and get the most risk reduction for the entire zone in order to qualify. And so therefore, using the four quadrant gate as a preferred treatment for this became the preferred alternative because it would allow us to get that most, most risk reduction in the entire zone. So that's just an example of this crossing and how we kind of whittled through those alternatives to come up with this as our preferred recommendation.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any further questions at this time? Thank you, Mr. Melkey. Appreciate your time and staying with us for a little bit longer meeting tonight.
My pleasure, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we do have two recommendations that are before us. What are the wishes of the council? Alderman, Janser.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we receive and file the report and direct staff to place this project in the upcoming capital improvement plan.
Have motion to accept and file and then to include in the upcoming CIP plan. Is there a second? Alderman Potagula?
I'll second.
Okay. Was that a second?
Yes.
Okay. I had Alderman Potagula first. Discussion on the motion. We do have a couple of people here as well. If you have some questions, please come up to the podium, state your name and city of residence. And if you have any questions, please proceed.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Leonard Nice. I own the property. It's a manufacturing facility, 101 Central Avenue East. And in 2011 and in the recent studies, I have only one exit out of my building. It's my loading dock and alleyway that I leased from Canadian Pacific Railroad on the north side of my building. And I have no way to get anything in or out of my building. And I have stuff that will not fit through any doors. And I use the loading dock weekly. And right now, even the delivery companies are mentioning that they do not want to make deliveries to me or have no way of getting downtown. So I just want you to make, be aware, it didn't show up on the slide presentation, but that is the dilemma that I am in and will be in if this goes ahead. And I would just like you to keep that in mind and take in consideration my property on 101 Central Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. If I could maybe have the city engineer, Lance, regarding this property. As far as access, we just spent a significant amount of time talking about access.
Right. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we spent a significant amount of time looking at different access configurations and improvements for these roadways downtown. And we knew Mr. Nice's building was going to be a concern. There's two things going on here. One, the railroad has now come through and essentially put Jersey barriers near each one of the street access points along this corridor. So they've essentially blocked off Mr. Nice and a whole series of other business owners' access to, to the streets. So their back of their stores, they can't get to. Now, there's not much we can do about that. It's the railroad's property and whatever lease agreement they have with those business owners, they need to work through that. Now regarding this project, you know, we, we looked at a series of intersections that we can treat along the corridor. And you'll notice that at Main Street, First Street, and, and Eighth Avenue and Ninth Street, those are not treated. And we're scoring enough points in the risk reduction by treating the intersections that we've had shown on the, on the slide here. And you can kind of mix and match this however you want to get the appropriate risk reduction we need to make this project work. So the trade-off to help Mr. Nice's issue, railroad issue aside, was to not do anything at First Street Northeast. So he would still, in theory, have access to the loading dock off of First Street, but maybe not Central Avenue. Now, you know, he has a dumpster and some other things that kind of sit on the corner there and, and, you know, the trucks, they hop the curb now to grab it and dump it and that's, that's fine. But the dumpster, excuse me, the, the loading dock would still be accessible from the other side because we're not doing any treatment at First Street. So I think we've solved that issue. You know, we tried to take as much of that input in as we can, you know, but with any project, there's, there's trade-offs. You can get the project done, but we might not necessarily be able to accommodate everyone in a built environment like we have downtown.
Thank you, Lance. Any other questions for Mr. Mayor? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Nice, in regards to the access point, is that something that is still viable then? If you have access from the one side, if you have that conditional lease with the railroad?
Well, Mr. Mayor, that, my dock has been there and the alleyway has been leased for over 100 years. My observation is, is that things didn't start happening until we started studying the quiet zone. I have nothing against the quiet zone. To me, it's a sound of progress, trains going back and forth. When I'm talking to the railroad people... trains going back and forth. When I'm talking to the railroad people, it's the opposite. It's the quiet zone that triggered everything. And I know safety is an issue. There's going to be safety things with and without the quiet zone that they're going to have to deal with. But in my case, it's easy to say, well, the railroad came through and closed off my only ability to get into my facility. And it's easy to say the city, you know, blame it on the city, blame it on the railroad. But if we got to have more pull than we have with the railroad, I've talked to them. They haven't told me yes or no on anything. That it would be there or not, these chunks of concrete that showed up back there. They didn't ask me they were going to put them there or warn me because I leased that alleyway from the railroad. And there's no, there's no safety issue with me getting to my dock. It's been like that for over 100 years. So I just want the city council to be aware that I cannot get stuff in and out of my building. We're dropping pallets off out on the street. And I got equipment that does not fit in and out. I got one piece of equipment we took apart into four pieces and got it on the dock and got it in the door and down the basement. There is no way. They're not going to let me put a dock in any of the other three sides of the building. I'm stuck. And there's a lot of things that happened over the years, and this is probably the worst thing that's happened to Gloria and I in the 21 years we've been downtown. Have no way in and out. So I plead with you to really take a good look at this and see if you need to buy my property, get me out of there, or we need to figure out a way that I can utilize the property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nice. That might be a conversation that perhaps either the city manager and the city engineer and myself and you can have with CP to find out what viable options we have to make all of it work. So, thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this that is here on the quiet zone issue? If not, Alderman Pittner.
My question would just probably be for Lance, as far as a timeline on funding, implementing quiet zone, once it enters the CIP.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Pittner, we're just beginning work now on our CIP for 2022 through 26. You know, now that we have an approximate cost because of this study, next step is to sit down with our finance department and project in the future, you know, where we think we'd have some available resources and then fit that into the CIP. My assumption is, is probably be about a 23 project. It'd be a little tight, I think, to try to get it now into the 22 years, especially since we have a budget approved and everything else. Once the funds are allocated, you know, we'd hire a consultant, go down that road, and then there's an application process that you have to make to the FRA to start this process moving, just like we did with BNSF with those crossings. That takes about 12 to 18 months. And during that time, we're doing the design and getting the project ready for bid. And then once everything's ready to go, we build the project and then complete the FRA paperwork. And then I think it's 30 days later, the quiet zone becomes active.
Any other questions for Mr. Meyer? Thank you again, Lance. Alderman Padugula?
Just to be crystal clear on this, so you're talking about starting the project in 2023?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Padugula, I think that with our current funding would be the earliest we could go unless council would fund the project from some other source that we haven't budgeted yet.
So we're talking about next year?
In my opinion, that's probably the earliest.
Okay. Thanks.
Further questions? Alderman Janzer?
I don't have a question.
Okay. Thank you, Lance. Alderman Janzer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I made the motion, you know, to approve this because I'm very much in favor of these, the quiet zone. I think that the one that was put in earlier has benefited many citizens by, you know, calming down the middle-of-the-night train horns that used to sound almost nonstop. And so although I'm very much in favor of this, I have great concern about Mr. Nice's dilemma. And I think we need to find a way to solve that if we're going to carry this forward. So I just wanted to put that on the record.
Further discussion?
Look at the city manager. And I would say if we can conditionally approve this and work forward with Mr. Nice, the city engineer, you and myself with Canadian Pacific Railroad to find an amicable solution. If not, I would have to look to the motion maker to see if that there's any other addendum to that, to that motion. Mr. City Manager?
A couple of points here. One, just because you put in the CIP, as was demonstrated with the earlier conversation with the Ann Street Bridge, that has been added in and taken out and put it back in the CIP. Just because you put it in the CIP doesn't mean it's getting done. So I don't, I mean, taking this action, receiving it, filing the report, putting it in the CIP, it's going to be up to the council and future budgets as far as when it hits priority to receive funding. Also, as we've discussed at length this evening with regards, and the intent was not to have this be a bully session against the railroad in our community, but to speak to the elephant in the room, at the end of the day, if you're asking Burlington Northern to make the concessions to approve a quiet zone in here, you're going to have to make the improvements. You're going to have to meet their conditions, which unfortunately puts our property owner at a disadvantage. And to put it blunt, I think your only alternative is to find some way of purchasing the property and relocating them if you're going to move forward with the quiet zone on behalf of the rest of the community. I don't think CP's going to help you acquire the property. They're already requiring you as a community to make the improvements, to increase that safety, to meet the requirements of the quiet zone. You know, the comment was made of needing more leverage and more firepower against the railroad. That just doesn't exist in the United States. They're given federal rights and protections from the very early years of when they were created. They have just almost as much right and protection as a tribal entity in the United States. That's the conditions you're dealing with at this point. So again, I don't see any problem with putting this in the CIP. There's obviously some things to work out. But to be honest and realistic, the best alternative out of here is probably to purchase the property.
Alderman Pittner?
Just, again, I, hypotheticals. Are we forced, if we make these improvements and the railroad's not willing to make some...
Concessions?
Concessions, thank you. It's been a long meeting. Are we at a legal liability with Mr. Nice of being sued by removing access? Maybe that's not an appropriate question, but that would be my question. Can we move forward with these improvements? Are we forced to buy an individual out? Is that our only course of action?
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
Before we start going down the path of buying properties and other things, I think we have some options available to us. You know, again, we had several crossings that we had looked at through this whole process. So if, as we get into the design of this project, you know, we can again start looking at different alternatives that can get us home to where we need to be with a risk reduction and try to balance the access needs that we have. Maybe what ends up happening is we don't do anything at Central Avenue, but Maple Street comes into play earlier than what we thought. Maybe we take that crossing out now instead of waiting for the diversion project to come through. So I think there's some things that we can explore before we completely go down that path. But, you know, there are potential options for property acquisition as well. But I think, I think the important thing is, is if there's interest to do the quiet zone project, let's start with that. And like any project, we get into the preliminary design and we look for the best alternatives. We just did that tonight with Ann Street Bridge. We looked at different alternatives that engineers came up with, and we present that to you. That's our job. So let's maybe think about that.
Alderman Pittner, does that...
The reason I ask is because it sounds like if we go through with this project, we've got to buy a property. And I don't know if that's worst-case scenario. I don't know if that's the only scenario. But I don't like how that's the leading theme of these conversations, that it's either all or nothing. Again, there's, from our staff, we're hearing, we can work through this. We can, we can, we can find a way to yes. We can make everybody as happy as possible. So again, I'm going to support this going forward. I'm receptive to the concerns of the property owner. I want to make this as amicable for everyone. But again, I'm in favor of moving this forward.
Any other comments or discussion? Last call for comments or discussion. We have a motion to approve. Please call the roll.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to 9.5. This is the MI5 project flood control, the CNM agreement with BNSF and SRJB. The MI5 consists of flood control along the railway avenue between Third Street Northeast and approximately 13th Street Northeast area. This portion of the project provides the northeast tieback, milestone number one, and ties in the high ground east of 13th Street Northeast. This consists of flood walls, levees, roadway, and utility relocation. A portion of this work is on BNSF right of way, so permanent and temporary easements are required to work on their property. The recommendations before us is that the council approve the CNM agreement with the SRJB and BNSF and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderman Ross, second by Alderwoman Olson. Discussion on the motion. Any discussion? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve. Please call the roll.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That takes us to 9.6. The approval of plans and specs and authorized to bid MI5B building relocation. As part of the MI5 alignment project, the SRJB has agreed to relocate a 60-by-200-foot building that was acquired out to the Public Works facility for use in storing flood control closures and flood control-related equipment. The recommendations to the full city council is to approve the plans and space for the bid of the building relocation on MI5B and two, to recommend the city council allow authorization to bid.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Janzer, second by Alderman Ross. Any discussion on the motion? Alderman Padugula?
Just a question for the public works director. I guess while he's walking up here, a compliment to him and other staff for trying to get a cost-effective solution here, particularly start reusing a building. Dan, a question I had for you is, will this be the only storage facility for those logs? And are we anticipating any difficulties in getting them to the different sites if there should be a need to deploy them?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Padugula, no, we currently have one facility already over on our water plant site that we built for the storage of the stop logs on the 16th Street and I guess Water Plant Road or 12th Street or Eighth Avenue, whatever you want to call that other closure there. This should be able to house all of the remaining closures that we'll have throughout the city. You know, some of the closures, the smaller ones, we keep at the lift stations, the stormwater lift stations, if it's a few stop logs or something for it. But our major closures should be able to go to this building and actually, to me, it's more cost-effective and a better way because we already have all the equipment out at Public Works. You know, Public Works was high and dry during the flood. So I think it's an ideal place to store and deploy all of the closures from.
Thanks.
Any further questions for our public works director? Thank you, Dan. Further discussion on the motion to approve? Last call for discussion. Motion is to approve the recommendations. Please call the roll.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion is approved. 9.7 is the Magic Fund Screening Committee. Steve Welding made a request from the Magic Fund for $128,571.49. The funds will be used for the community match for a Bank of North Dakota PACE loan to purchase the business, real estate, and equipment. The recommendations to the full city council is to approve the Magic Fund request from Steve Welding, two, approve the development agreement with Steve Welding, and three, authorize the mayor and finance director to sign the necessary documentation.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderwoman Olson to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Ross. Discussion on the motion. Alderwoman Evans?
I have a question for someone. I'm not sure who. Maybe somebody from the Magic City Fund. Dave? Thank you.
We have our finance director here.
That's, he knows it all. So I'm still learning all about the Magic City Fund. Tell me, how often do we approve funds for entities outside of the city of Minot?
Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Evans, that just depends on when we get these requests. We haven't had a lot of activity through the Magic Fund for quite some time. It's been very sporadic. It's very limited, but it is allowed in the Magic Fund guidelines. It is allowed as long as it's in the Minot trade area. So this would qualify through the current guidelines for the Magic Fund.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification, Dave. I appreciate it.
Any further questions for our finance director? Further discussion? Final call for discussion. Motion is to approve the recommendations. Please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padugula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Sitma?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Motion is approved. That is the end of our action items section. We can now move on to number 10. This is personal appearances. This is an opportunity for anyone to come forward and speak on any item that is or is not on our agenda. I would just ask if you do come forward to state your name and your city of residence and keep comments. Two, five minutes. Second call for personal appearances. Seeing none, we'll move on to number 11, the miscellaneous and discussion items. Are there any other items for the need for, I guess, any further discussion that are not on our agenda this evening for the betterment of the order? Alderman Padugula?
Just a follow-up on the Ann Street Bridge. I wanted you to understand, Sean, I wasn't in any way questioning your representing the city or your relationship with this representative from the railroad. I applaud your personal involvement in many of these things, whether it's the legislature or the railroad. The only issue I was raising was her authority to speak on behalf of the railroad. So I didn't mean to question your, like, say, your relationship with her or what information you've gotten from them. And I appreciate the dose of reality both you and Harold have been giving us about the railroad. We certainly don't want to bash them, but they are indeed a very powerful historical force in this country and need to be respected. Love them.
Thank you, Alderman Padugula. And just for the clarification of the record, Regional Director of Public Affairs is what the title is. And that does bring up another good point. It's been a tough night on the railroad, on the council here. And while sometimes we have significant disagreements, we also do have close partnerships. The port that is in operation for Intermodal is one of those key components when we talk about that relationship that is important, not only to the city of Minot, but regionally. They also are one of the larger employees to the city of Minot. And while sometimes they don't act, I think, in our opinion, as the best community partner that we would like to see, as our city manager pointed out, railroads, whether it be Canadian Pacific or Burlington Northern, Santa Fe Railway, do act in their own interests, to the best of their interests. That's something, whether we like it or not, it's just the way that the situations are. So, Alderman Pittner?
To that point, Mayor, city of Minot's not here without the railroad. So again, I think they've done a lot for this community. My dad is number one seniority in the state of North Dakota for Burlington Northern. He's given, the railroad's provided for my family. So again, I tip my hat to them. I understand it can be difficult at times, but they are a community partner because they provide jobs, they provide people to the community. So again, we're all doing our best here. So...
Any further discussion for the betterment of the order? Seeing none, that moves us to number 12, adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Pittner, second by Alderman Ross to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. We're adjourned.